All right, the mics are.
All right, it is seven, six P M. And I'll call this Barry City Council meeting to order on this Tuesday, June twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Council president tonight includes Council hearing, Council Chambel, Council, council, Stockwell, and Council Lozong, and Mayor Jay Kimmer. Staff joining us, City Manager St. Lucestro, Clerk Treasurer Dawes, and Chief, our Chief Cushman, Deputy Chief Altworth, Public Works Director. Oh my gosh, I'm so embarrassed. Yeah. And are there any other city staff?
The chairman.
The chairman. All right. And tonight's agenda is available online in the back of the room. This meeting has been publicly posted. It is being recorded in something that allows only meeting law and custom rules of procedure. We will be online. I want to offer a warm welcome to everybody joining us tonight. To those of you who are joining us online, please keep in mind that the chat function should only be used for technical issues or difficulties. The city offers online access as a convenience, and we will continue the meeting if any technical difficulties occur. Please raise your hand if you would like to speak and be recognized. Introduce yourself and speak into the microphone. If you're online, please apparently mute it when you're not speaking. I'll call speakers in order, allowing those who haven't spoken yet to speak first and leave time if necessary to do the city's business. If you have any questions about process or procedure, please ask, and we will get it sorted. And I want to thank everyone in advance for participating in a similar way. With that, are there any adjustments to the agenda, Manager St. Lucestro?
Not from the mayor. From the council. One piece, Mayor, concerning the council, we received the agreement between the city of Barry, Vermont, and Barry Opera House in our packet. Pretty comprehensive. It was consistent with all of the briefings that we've received from the city manager, so there's no objection. I'd like to add that to the consent agenda.
Are there any objections to the terms of the agreement heading into the consent agenda?
We're still negotiating with the Opera House. I think if the council wants to approve it as it is, we're still in negotiation. But I think if the
Oh, it's not a final.
It's not a final, but I think if the council, yeah, it's up to, you know, if the council wants to signal approval of this draft.
Well, it's not a final. It sounds like we need to be briefed on the negotiation position and before proceeding to any, taking any position.
Yeah, either. I'm fine with it as it is.
All right.
Thank you.
And I have one question on the authorization to execute contracts. Was the only contract on the consent agenda on the Syntas contract?
Yes, so it was only one contract.
And were there any bidders in that?
There were two bidders. They were the little bidder, and they were the more comprehensive bidder.
Okay. And I want to just remove from the consent agenda the approval of the excavation permit fees. Since that's a new fee, and the consent agenda is generally for public routine information and non-controversial evidence, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page about that, what we're going to do under new business, under the
Just wondering, Mayor, if you don't mind if we do it right? It's the first time we have staff here to speak to that, so if that was okay.
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
Eighteen. Are there any?
Yeah. If that's okay. Bill, that we need to
Any other adjustments to this? All right. Here in City None, that takes us to visitors and communications. This is an opportunity
We have both, did we?
We're just having adjustments needed.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I was disappointed to take, pull some things from the consent agenda. So under visitors and communication, this is an opportunity to speak to any item that is not on the agenda tonight. Would anyone member of the public like to speak?
Lisa Liotta. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Lisa Liotta, and I live at twenty-eight Main Street. Just wanted to say my name is Lisa. I'm a miss, or a ma'am, or a missus. You can address me as Lisa. I appreciate it. I came to speak because I strongly believe that Barry City community should be staffed by Barry City residents. And I'm kind of at a loss why we appoint people who are not Barry City residents to our communities. I'm not aware of any other municipality that neighbors us, or really anywhere in the state that lets that happen. And it could happen. I haven't checked extensively, but I don't know why we would let people who are not residents of our city make decisions that affect, you know, our policies and our picture of where we are. So I did apply. I put my name forward to serve for DRB Board One and on planning commission. And I did that because I felt that I needed to step up and strive. I reached out today to Jeffrey Tuper Giles, who currently holds the Board One DRBC. And we messaged back and forth a little bit. And I did apply because I didn't know who else was going to be applying. And Jeffrey had let me know that he has applied. And I think Jeffrey has done a good job. I've reviewed his decisions, and I agree with most, but not all of them. And I think he's a fine, a fine DRB commissioner. So I would like to withdraw my name from serving on that board. And also, I did also put my name forward to planning commission. And I saw that there were eight applicants for five positions, which is fabulous. I'm so happy someone even stepped forward. And so at this time, I'm also withdrawing my application for that position. But I am very interested in serving on DRB Board Planning Commission, and I will be back again. Thank you.
Very gracious of you, Lisa. Thank you. And I mean, I know this isn't a time for interaction. This is for the audience to address the council and the mayor, but I do support allowing Barry Town residents to serve on the committee side. I'd be happy to grab a coffee with you and explain to you in detail why that is.
That'd be great.
Yeah, thanks.
Are there other items for visitors and communication? This is one communication item. I was reflecting yesterday was Juneteenth. It's a new federal holiday. It recognizes the date of June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, when news reached the state of Texas, the slave people in the state of Texas, that they had been emancipated. That was two point five years after Lincoln issued Emancipation Proclamation. And if you know Vermont history, you know that Vermont made more contributions than most other states to that effort. We sent ten million dollars to the war effort. We sent ten percent of our population to fight the war. Five thousand two hundred and thirty-seven Vermonters died for the freedom of people that stood against Southern racists who denied liberties for, to, to people, black people in the United States. And I know, you know, we've had a lot of teleconversations about diversity, equity, inclusion, anti-racism in this community. We had the first federally encraved in the state of Vermont that occurred within our borders. It was definitely a sad moment and a setback. And we've learned, we've learned recently that there was a neo-Nazi on a, on a body that had oversight of state, our city's tax fare dollars. And I say this knowing that, you know, how we confront these challenges, how we move forward on these challenges really matters, and how we confront racism really matters. And Vermont has often been on the right side of history. And in the war in the Civil War, we were, and I hope, I hope we can continue to be, and I'm setting, I hope we can set that tone as a council to stand resolutely against racism, white supremacy, neo-Nazism, and, and our community. That's my communication item. Are there any other items for visitors and communication? All right. That takes us to the consent agenda. We have several items on the consent agenda. We have approval of the minutes, the regular city council meeting Tuesday, June sixth, twenty twenty-three. We have the city warrants, June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, June twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. We have clerk's offices, licenses, and permits.
None.
We have approval of a letter to green non-transit requesting restoration services. We have an annual presentation of the Internal Financial Controls Checklist. We have authorization of a quick claim deed to merge the Eastland property with the Capatch, which previously discussed by council. We have approval of the city council annual appointments, and we have authorization of the manager to execute a contract with Syntas for uniforms, as well as a resolution, excuse me, to designate the manager as an authorized official with the Northern Border Regional Commission to implement the pump, the pump station grant for that property. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved, second.
There's a motion in the second, motion by Council Stockwell, second by Council Chambel. Is there any further discussion? I will say, on the appointments, I, I do have a little reservation with about a city council officer appointment for a city attorney. I've been disappointed in the litigation, go to the environmental division of the Spirit Court, with absolutely no heads-up briefing that they did out in the field, that they'd had been remanded to the DRB, or an opportunity to understand what was going to be presented in discovery and statement of questions at a time when that's grand list value in the fifth district, and it's a demolition, the demolition potential home in this housing crisis. So I'll say I'm, I'm very concerned about that performance.
Mayor, if I may, that's not a, that's not a reflection of City Attorney Twonley. If anything, that's a reflection on me because he's been keeping me in touch. It's been my failure to get the council the updates on time, but I don't, you may, there may be other issues, but I just want to make sure that on that particular situation, City Attorney Twonley has been keeping me updated. It's been my fault of not making sure the council was updated in a timely manner.
Thank you. There's a motion in the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, yes, the consent agenda is adopted. That takes us to the Clerk Treasurer Report.
Just one thing, a final reminder that water and sewer bills are due by the end of this month, which is the end of next week, June thirtieth. So stop in and pay, or pay online, or drop it in the Dropbox, or drop it in the mail, as long as it has a U.S. Post Office postmark by June thirtieth, you'll be all set. The only other thing I'd say is that we're doing, in my office and in other offices, we're, we're closing in on the end of the fiscal year, so we're doing final, right now, I'm submitting final bond requisitions for reimbursement of funds, just to get us through the fiscal year, to bring us up to date. We've been doing some fund transfers that will clean up things for accounting purposes for FY twenty-three. And so there's been a fair amount of that kind of work going back and forth with the finance department. So that's it.
Thanks. Any questions for Clerk Attorney Dawes? Here in City None, that takes us to the Liquor and Cannabis Control Board. We have one applicant for a new business in Barry City.
We do. We have a Grab and Go, which is a new establishment that will be at, hello, Grab, rock, just fatal, that will be at two seventy-seven North Main Street, three seventy-seven North Main Street. And we have representative, Bemick, I'm not going to try to say your last name because I will mispronounce it, I'm afraid. But come on up. Bemick is the, will be the manager and is here representing Tara, his brother, who lives in California.
Yeah.
And I told him it's our practice to have new license holders come before the council and introduce themselves.
Yeah. We are, we are opening convenience store with food trailer and three seventy-seven North Main Street. And yeah, it's, it's kind of like a convenience store. We sell beer, soda. That's it. And also, there is a food trailer and different kinds of food, Nepali food. So I don't see in, inside the city. So yeah, that's it.
Oh, that's good news. Yeah.
The, the food trailer is going to come a little ways down the line. They're not quite ready to bring the, the food trailer in yet. But they're, but they do have all the police department, fire department inspection approvals for their second-class liquor license and tobacco license. So that's what we have in front of us today.
Well, thank you for the application. Are there any questions for the applicant? Council Ears, what brings you guys to Barry?
Yeah, because we live in California. We moved to around, you know, moved to Texas, and then, you know, I feel very hot in Texas.
So we were.
I wake up in hot, every day, like a hundred and ten degrees. Let's go to eastern side. So I came to east coast. I stayed in Albany and tried to run the business.
Sure.
I found here, and let's try. Maybe something happened.
Thanks for this in Barry.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilor Green. Yeah, I'm going to be abstaining from the vote. It's nothing to do with, it's just I'm abstaining from all liquor licenses, so, but I can't wait to go.
Yeah, thank you.
Also, we have an outside meeting with the food trailer. Do you have outside seating available?
Yeah.
At all, you want?
Yeah.
Awesome.
Yeah, that's good.
It does. So you went from, so you were in California, went to Texas, Q hot, a hundred and ten degrees.
Yeah.
And then to Vermont.
Yeah.
So you threw the short straws, which is kind of, which is right. Well, welcome to Barry. Hope you're well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, sir. An ocean of proof. The
So, thank you.
Motion by Council Gary, second. I'll, Council Lozong. Any further discussion? Barry in City None, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
Stay.
While the extension noted, open Barry.
And Bemick, you don't have to stay. You can, if you like.
We may be here until seven P M. I don't know.
And, and I meant to mention it when we were approving the consent agenda. I'm going to pass the resolution appointing the manager as our representative, our official representative. And we've got signatures on this side. They don't need signatures on this side. And there's two copies.
So that takes us to the City Manager Report.
Thank you, Mayor. So update from the RAC Department, facilities. Just a reminder, the pool is opening Friday, the twenty-third. The first day hours will be twelve-thirty to four P M. And admission is free. So come on out and check out the pool. The staff, the crew have been working. They painted it, painted the pool house. Things are looking really sharp. And so come out, check it out. We have new rates for the season. Pool passes will be available at the, at the pool. And we are also accepting for the first time credit card payments for people like me and Don, Kerry Cash. You'll just have to pay the service charge that goes with it. You can slide your card through that square and go into the pool. Update from D P W, the paving update. Brian's had the crews very, very busy, and our contractor very, very busy with paving. You haven't noticed River Street, Center Street, and Blackwall Street overlays are all complete. Backly Street and Richardson Street overlays are underway. They've started the shimming. And Jorgensen Lane rebuild has also gotten started. So the next, in the very near future, work is coming to overlay for South Main Street path Cummings, which I know is on everyone's list, and some North Main overlay also near the North Barry Manor area, which is really poor that way. The Warren Street rebuild is also on deck. The crews have been working there a lot on the sidewalks and the infrastructure. So Brian's doing a great job keeping these guys busy. And you've noticed if you've driven that, that part of the city. Update from P P A, permitting planning assessment. They've been focused on the rental registry invoices going out for FY twenty-four. They were all sent out at the end of last week and to a total, for a total of about twenty-six hundred dwelling units. And payments are starting to, to come in today. So just a reminder, we, this is a big line in our budget, a hundred thirty-three thousand per year. So Jenna and the team have been busy making sure those get out the door. And then finally, I know today we're finishing up the appointments for the committee's task force and boards. Just Clerk Dawes and I are working on a refresher training orientation for both new members and returning members on open meetings law, Zoom access, those kinds of things, the reminders on the, the rules of conduct that we sent out previously. So we will be scheduling that sometime for July. So we won't get everybody before the first meeting, but we'll try to get as many people as possible before they have too many meetings on their new bodies. So that's it for me.
So, okay. Any questions for the, Council Ears?
Do you know if the guardrail that's on the corner of Garfield Ave and Prospect Street is on the radar to be fixed? Garfield Ave and Prospect was damaged this winter. Essentially been taken off the bank.
I'll, I'll check with Brian. I will confirm. I think right now, the, the way things have been going now with trying to stay real busy ahead of the contractor, that we've been putting some of those projects off as we get streets ready for them to come forward and pave. So I think once we get deeper into the summer, when we've gotten far enough ahead of the contractor, projects like this will start to pick up.
Okay.
Yeah. But I'll, I'll talk with, with Brian, and we'll, we'll make sure that's on our radar.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Are there any questions for the City Manager? One question I had was, oh, yeah, Sonis Spolde.
Um, question.
You can cover the microphone, otherwise people online can hear you.
Thank you.
No.
Sonis Spolde, I have a question about, and maybe it's the same answer you just gave, but lane lines, as far as they come into intersections and multiple lanes, and when there's no signage, you don't live here, or are new to the area, don't understand that there's two lanes, and it can be problematic. So.
It's the exact same thing. Yeah. So we, what, what happens is the crews are staying ahead of the favors. This is, this is also a popular summer year for, for folks to take days off. And so we're just short, we're shorters. But yeah, they are, when they're able to get far enough ahead of the contractor, they're, they're starting to do some of those most lame lines again.
Perfect. Thank you.
Sure.
Councilor Lozong.
Uh, thanks, Mayor. Number one, we're coming up on your anniversary note.
Yes.
So we're in team.
Damn, kind of flies while having fun. No, and I say that for an evaluation process and whether the council has been thinking about that.
It's, it's on the agenda for tonight's.
Okay, good. And secondly, South Main Street, south, actually, it would be, would be south of Cumberland Farms. It's just getting dangerous up there as you go up the hill. And I don't know if it would be possible to make a telephone call to the secretary. I mean, it's bad. And it's, and what concerns me especially now is that a lot of children walk to the pool as we open the pool. Some go up the back way and then through the path. Others prefer to walk up the sidewalk. And, you know, for the most part, people do drive carefully. Those, you know, I drive over that section at least six times a day, one way or another. And most people are very careful, but they're, the potholes are getting much bigger.
Yeah.
And so you have to go much closer to the sidewalk to avoid them.
So that is, yeah, that is on our immediate next list for overlay. Brian and I met with the state at that intersection, and we wanted them to see what was happening. And fortunately or unfortunately, about four out of every five cars that went by were doing exactly what we were telling them would happen, which is people going south are veering over the center line. People are coming north, and they, they don't, they can't see it because it's a blind corner, and so you have near misses. And so, right, Brian, I think four out of five of the people we were seeing on that, when we were out there with the state were doing that, the state maintains that it's a, it's a maintenance issue. So what we were able to work out with them is they're going to pay us fifty-five percent of the cost to do the overlay since we, we went out and did. They're not scheduled, they're not scheduled to do a rebuild there until twenty-seven, right? So we said, that's not, that's just not good enough. That's, it's going to be, probably someone's going to get hurt or killed there. So we, we worked out this arrangement where we're going to split the cost so that we can have some safety. And it was sort of an immediate mix-up. But that's, that's on our crews list. They, they've also done a great job. I think they're in some of the brush on the north.
Yeah, I know this, that.
Yeah. So that helps with a little bit of invisibility. But the real solution will be when, when our crews are able to get the, the overlay there, which should be very soon.
And give or take just a time frame on it. Do you know, Brad?
Nah, it's not a gotcha. Yeah, yeah. Just, just, I would guess two to three weeks at the, at the most.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Depending on weather.
Yeah. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, and I appreciate that we're stepping up the main, the state's road to work. But I also, is there any concern about setting a precedent that we're now going to be maintaining state's infrastructure?
I mean, I, I, absolutely I'm concerned about it, but there's, the state is firm that they're, they're not obligated to do anything to that road for twenty-seven. And so we don't think that to twenty-seven is a, is a responsible way to leave those roads that long. So what we were able to do is, is get the state to support. We have a contract. We told, we showed them a bid contract. We have a contractor. We were, they're going to share the cost with us, which is going to allow us to then also pay the section of North Main, which is also quite poor. So, yeah.
But that's definitely the state's right away.
I mean, that's, that's a state highway. I mean, it's, yeah.
It's a class one state highway, but it is the Barry City right of way. So we own the road. They have it on their paving schedule for maintenance every, they did it in two thousand eighteen.
Yes.
When they redid it, and it's scheduled for two thousand twenty-seven to be redone.
So they considered what needs to be done to a now routine maintenance, which would be the city's responsibility. We, we pointed out that whatever the state did in twenty eighteen clearly hasn't withstood the test of time. I mean, we drive in other communities, and the pavement's not that poor. So we thought it was for the safety of the people who, who drive there, north of the city, making sure it gets done, making sure the state helps, and doing it in a way that helps us do some more paving on the other end of North, on the other end of Main Street.
All right. Thanks. And I think for me at least, you know, I'd be curious a little more about like the differences in the maintenance schedule or retrans between class one state highways and the other classes of state highways, and just to understand how the money flows, and make sure Barry City is giving the best, best thing we can. Is it possible also to get copied on all public works permits? I know we get all the fire department and zoning permits, but we don't get copied on the public works permits in our package, just to see, see the volume of access permits, excavation permits, municipal water and wastewater connection permits, these types of things?
I'm sure we could work it out.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions for the City Manager? All right. Here in City None, that takes us to the first item of new business, which is the approval of excavation permit fees. And the reason I wanted to pull this off the consent agenda, because, because I've been talking with, well, actually, Sam and I were at a meeting with some landlords, talking about building construction. And they were concerned about some of the, that they felt like some Barry City permits duplicate what the state is looking at, both the Division of Fire Safety and our fire department. They were, then there's, it seems like there was some potentially overlapping jurisdiction between a zoning permit is required here within the city and this new permit form. And, let's see, I'm, and I'm sorry, I have a little bit of cold. I'm losing the third point. But, but basically, I was just really concerned about that we're setting up a new fee, an improvement program. I want to understand how that integrates. So that way, I, we're a bit, we're a development friendly community. We're really transparent with people about the services we offer, and, and that our ordinances are in shape, so that it's a predictable outcome. And just this, just this yesterday, Lisa and I were digging, put a fence, or which we pulled, you know, we pulled our permit for the water and found an old store in, in the back, which I suspect was at one point connected to the city's stormwater system, infrastructure. And, and in this permit form, it appears that we're taking on, there's language in the permit form that talks about stormwater issues. And, and potentially.
Or is this from our connection?
The last page.
Aye.
Stormwater sewer services.
So that should be coming out.
And then on, and on the first page, there's another section that talks about drainage. And I just want to make certain that we're not taking on people's stormwater treatment at a cost of one hundred dollars, no matter how much impervious surface is being taken on in perpetuity. Because that, we already have the three acre stormwater permit that's coming on, and it's affecting school properties and city properties. The half acre permit's going to be next. And then pretty soon. And then pretty soon, there's gonna be a wave of people who want to connect to our disconnected storm sewer system, which are often, as I understand, straight pipes to remains of the river. And if there's illicit connections or discharges and those lowerways become impaired, as I understand, we have multi-million dollar liability exposure to, if we have to come under NMS four permit, which is a federal permit administered by the states, and then we would have to take mitigation impact. So I just want to be absolutely clear that this is not...
This is not a stormwater connection. No, this is a, so this was changed based on your objections to that previously. So that was blacked out here at the top. This was on there and editing this stormwater piece will come down here. We're not backdooring stormwater connections. This is straight up excavation permit fees. The Department of Public Works has been doing this and Bill and Brian can speak to that. This is if someone's digging, they come in, right now what they're doing is they're coming in and they're getting the permit anyway and, and there's no fee charged for the staff time that it takes to do that. So this was a way to generate some non-tax revenue for the city in a way that's responsible, it's not onerous. I believe Brian and TJ who worked on this forum, basically went to the Montpelier, looked at some of their surrounding communities and, and we're trying to be consistent with what neighboring communities are doing so that we're not excessive, precisely so that we are, you know, I think if, if this fee is anti-development, then certainly it would be a charge upon all our neighbors as well. So this is to, this is to generate some non-tax revenue, give us even the slightest bit of relief on the tax rate, which I get is gonna be probably small, but it's still something. And this is, these are permits that our public works department is already granting, they're just not charging any fees for it. So the fee schedule is consistent with what I believe Montpelier is doing almost word for word.
And, and one thing for those fees is really to cover the city's expenses if the contractor doesn't do it properly.
Yeah.
So that's, part of that fee is, you know, if they don't compact or pave correctly and our guys have to go repair it, we're at least partially covered here for that.
Yeah.
And so when somebody, let's say somebody does a water connection and their contractors are connecting their pipes, storm pipes, they would come in with their permit application, they would pay the excavation fee, the water, water fee, water connection fee, and, and would they be providing any surety or like how does, how does the oversight work?
They have to have a certificate of insurance liability filed with our office for any work they do in the city.
Right. Thanks, this is really helpful. So just to be clear, there's, this would not... Stormwater connections. And the other thing I noticed, just looking on the ordinance, it talks a lot about street commissioners and it reminds me how outdated some of these public works ordinances are, traffic, street sidewalks, and that, that this really needs to be, I know we, it's already in the Capitol, we're getting a little bit to get those studies going, but updating these ordinances I think are, are, yeah, important. Though it's a predictable environment and understanding, that we're making sure that we understand that we're not duplicating anything that the state's doing.
Right.
Or taking on long-term liabilities that don't pencil out.
Right.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Sure.
Just a couple of questions if I could, and Bill, maybe you're the, maybe you're the guy that you put in the hot seat, if you don't mind, come out. So just wanted to make sure, yeah, I didn't read the storm, I was kind of okay on the stormwater side, but I just wanted to be clear that in terms of access, if someone is creating a new permanent access to public, a driveway, the, the fee only applies, I guess it just wasn't clear to me, but it was clear in the others, but it wasn't clear to me in this one, the fee only applies to that section of the driveway that is within the city right of way.
Right.
So you're not, you're not calculating, you're not calculating the fee if someone has a, you know, 100 foot long driveway, you're not, you're not calculating the fee on the whole, on the whole driveway, just on that section that would be within the...
So, so I can answer certainly for historic practice, but, but genuinely, Brian is our public works director and...
Oh, I know that.
But, but, but it is based solely on...
She can remember his name, no way.
Good name tag, Brian, for the rest of the years.
If we look at the application, it was specific to the work within the city's right of way and the street.
Yep.
And it actually broke out the, the square foot area, I think, pretty clearly.
Yeah, pavement, curving and sidewalk, anything disturbed?
Within the right of way. And so that 100 foot long driveway, whether it was paved or gravel, wouldn't have an effect on the permit. So it is truly about the effect on the city's right of way and, and infrastructure that Brian was focusing.
You sure?
I'm sure.
I mean, you got, nothing to lose if you're not giving me accurate rating.
No, no.
I mean, this is, well, this is your last council meeting. Everybody's just watching, Lowtown's just lost it and no, I just like to give Bill a hard time, that's all. And this is, and this is your last council meeting.
I suspect truly so.
I'm never quite sure.
13 days left. I left open to Nicholas or Brian, if they'd like to attend, I'd love to come back, you're a wonderful body to talk with, so the systems are very uncertain, I want any talent that I have, so, yeah, my pleasure.
Bill, sir, let's go.
So there's a 2,000 water connection fee and a 2,000 sewer connection fee, and then there's the excavation, which is really is pretty minimal compared to the other fees. But, so if someone's doing ADU over their garage, but they're, they're still being charged, they start with a 4,000, but it connects.
Yep.
Thank you.
For the, even if they're not...
If we have to put in separate connections, you know?
Oh, if they have to put in separate connection.
Which I think, I think the state is, I think it's in the state regulation that it's supposed to be a separate connection if it is an ADU, only for possible future subdivision of that law.
And then they have to go to the state, see what wastewater permit as well.
Right.
So, they have to...
On the access, so when somebody, like, we see a lot of really creepy accesses around Berry City, right? Like the ones that are especially weird are the ones that are on the corner of a sidewalk, like, right? And that's really typical, I've never seen it anywhere else. And, I can't think of another example where I've seen that. What standards are you applying? Like what's in the ordinance that, that says this is, this is where I can and can't permit a curb cut? And these are the standards that have to apply, like how, why does that have to be? Because they have to get a zoning permit too, right?
Yeah.
So, so Brian actually is actively working on developing those standards, but our, our practice in the past was to look specifically at the MUTCD distances from the intersection. And, and because we're an old community, there are a lot of pre-existing things that truly don't comply. And so anything that we've issued in the last six years has 15 foot setback from the intersection point, consistent with what would be a yellow painted curb under the MUTCD to preserve site distance from either of the roads that join it. So if it's in that zone, like for the last six years, we've not proved that curb cut. It has to be outside of that. And it's based on the MUTCD. We don't have published standards and that's one of the things that Brian has...
Started working, working on himself.
Okay. Counselor.
Can you tell me what an MUTCD is? For those that have no idea?
Washington DC diagram.
So the federal government's wisdom decided they would describe all the things that could possibly apply. It's called the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices.
Good.
And so it covers everything, signs, lines, curbs, guardrail.
Came in a book to buy.
Uh, it's online.
Oh, you even thought, you thought.
And downloadable for free.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah. I see a question from Bernadette Rose, Bernadette Rose.
Hi. My question, Bill, is for you. I wonder if you could speak to the North Berry Manor bus stop and the relocation of that, which when I dressed with Nicholas and Brian earlier this year, they didn't know anything about it and they hadn't heard about it yet. You'd had that in your, your files and we were working on that. So I'm just wondering, how, how does something that feels to be so important get totally lost and not addressed? And thank you for making sure that people know about it. Thank you.
So if I could just start, Bill has briefed us on this, this is one of the list of many things that I don't come prepared to talk on a daily basis, but Bill certainly had not kept this a secret from myself or Brian. But I would just say that the overarching response, Bern, is that it goes, and I know it's a hard answer and it's not the best answer and we wish we had a different answer, which is we have limited crews that have limited deployments. And so, you know, I, I know that's a, that's a tough response. Bill, I don't know if you want to share anymore, but, but I know you've done the drawings, I know it's, it's a matter of just being able to deploy staff and balancing 100 million priorities.
So I might add that Brian has allocated some of TJ's, his engineering tech's time so that we can go out and lay that out.
Yeah.
And so the design that we provided was gonna create a crosswalk, relocate the bus station, but retain all the current traffic control features. It was gonna move the center line substantially at North Berry Manor in order to create a safe zone for the bus stop. The physical room is there and, and Brian's had a chance to see it. TJ and I were gonna go out and lay it out so that we could ensure continuity. It was one of my priorities for this year, but I think the success in the paving program is, is something that has kind of taken some precedence and certainly I believe the city will get there and will make sure that TJ and Brian know exactly what it is so that they can develop it when, when that becomes available.
Well, thank you. That's why I brought it up now, because last year it was a priority and we were going to do it in November and we were going to do it in the spring before that, and then we were going to do it this spring. And when I talked to Nicholas about it, Nicholas had, didn't know anything about it earlier this year. And it's been three years that we've been told that that was going to happen. So I appreciate knowing and getting it on the record that this is indeed in the works. I don't live there, but I'm advocating for the safety of all the people who use that bus stop and are endangered every day. And especially people in wheelchairs who can't get out of the street because the bus stop in the winter is actually right in the middle of the road. So thanks for, all of you, for Nicholas, Brian and for Bill and TJ for working on this together, because it's a really important safety issue for a busy place in the city. So, thanks, guys. Can't hear you. Still no sound. No sound.
We're, we are being duplicative, we're more than happy to, to look at it.
Okay. All right, thanks.
I mean, just, that also impacts revenues, but that's, that's a choice we can all...
Thank you, Prudence.
Yep.
I think so. She just said it was on.
That was very weird.
I might, Mayor? So this is Bill's last council meeting and we have a little, something that we got for him. Put this on the agenda just so he'd have to be here today. But this is a...
It's an urn.
Youth triumphant.
It's the same thing. I would say...
Better than that, it's better than that, wait.
And it says, "In recognition of Bill Ahern for his service to the city of Berry, 2017 to 23," I mean, Bill has a very, his career here in the city is relatively short, but we know Bill's had a really long career for the state of Vermont. We're glad he shared the twilight of it here in the city of Berry. This is a planter, but we also thought, you know, that Clerk Dawes, she, she thought maybe we should fill it with hot mix, but we thought maybe you'd...
It could be a pothole.
It could be a pothole, but we thought instead you'd like to put some plants in it and be nicer. So, Bill, thank you, it's, we, we didn't overlap for very long, but it's been great, you know, getting to learn from you. We're gonna miss you and this is just a little token from, from the staff.
I am totally surprised. I have no inkling this would happen. One, one of the things, if I, if I could, would be just to say thank you to the, to the council and to Nicholas and our prior manager. It's been a pleasure trying to apply everything that I know for the benefit of the city. It hasn't been without some small controversies, but on the whole, it has been a wonderful, wonderful time and I thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
So is there a motion to approve the new...
So moved.
New fee and form, application form.
Moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. That takes us to a BADC strategic planning and marketing update. Thank you for coming, Director Green. And...
Shannon.
Shannon.
You could almost say director, Shannon.
Shannon Alexander, yeah.
All right, so Nicholas, you do the disclaimer because it's not my fault.
Oh, yeah, this is not Counsel Wazak's fault. I didn't load the PowerPoint on the laptop, but Counsel Wazak diligently found it on the packet, so he'll be scrolling through, but at least folks in the audience will be able to follow along, so.
Hello, everybody, my name's Emma Green, I'm the executive director of Berry Area Development.
I'm Shannon Alexander, the marketing coordinator.
Thank you for having us and for the opportunity to present our marketing plan. I'm gonna start off actually before the marketing presentation and share with you a brief update on our strategic planning, which is not in the marketing presentation, but I wanted to give the council an opportunity to let us, let you know where we are. As outlined in our fiscal year '24 goals and also in our budget, we're preparing for a full-scale strategic plan for the town, the city and also the Wilson Industrial Park, a long overdue strategic planning process. We are in the process of forming a subcommittee of our board who will vet candidates for this project. Currently, we're looking at two candidates. One is Jim Burson, a field partner, I believe the city used, and the other one is another Jim, Jim Lipinski, who comes highly recommended by an esteemed retired economic development person here in Vermont, John Mandeville. who comes highly recommended by an esteemed retired economic development person here in Vermont, John Mandeville. So we're looking at both those individuals. As I mentioned, a subcommittee has been formed. They're going to vet these, these professionals and then bring their recommendations to the full board in August, the full board of Berry Area Development. And from there, we will launch the process. So I wanted to give you that update as to where we are and certainly answer any questions before I jump into the marketing presentation.
So when's it going to start? The, the, the strategic.
Subcommittee has formed and they're vetting and reviewing the applicants. We're considering them to be applicants, applicants or candidates, Jim Lipinski and Jim Burson.
Do you expect like you'll have them on board in three months, six months?
Right. So they're vetting them and in August they'll bring their recommendations to the full board of Berry Area and make a recommendation. And then we expect August, September to actually launch the process. Our goal will be to actually go through the strategic, strategic planning process as per our agreement with the city and the town in the fiscal year '24. So from July to July, really, and wrap up with a full strategic plan, hopefully for rollout. Ideally sometime, you know, early spring of next year into, into next summer. As you know, I mean, these are thoughtful, long-term processes. This is something that hasn't happened in a long time and we really want to make sure we're, we're serving the town, the city. And, you know, I bring the Wilson Industrial Park into that as well because that they're a key piece of our development work.
Thank you. Any other questions on the strategic planning piece of the project?
Great. So I'll jump into our marketing presentation. Couple of things I just wanted to mention before scrolling down. Are you going to be doing the?
Yeah, just let me know when to go to the next one.
Okay, so stay there for now. Two things I just want to mention as some new initiatives, which are kind of exciting, we're working on. We have, we're in the process of launching what we're calling the Main Street Marketing Coalition in collaboration with the Berry Partnership and varying key stakeholders to look at our main street here in the city and really help to determine what the best recruitment efforts are going to be for new businesses in some of the vacant spots. There's people that come, there's people that go. And we really want to go through as a part of the strategic plan as well, as kind of all these parallel processes. Go through the exercise of, you know, really vetting and understanding, you know, who is best placed where, what sorts of businesses do we want to bring as we revitalize the downtown, what's missing. And so that's one thing we're working on. The other thing, which is kind of exciting, is we've launched a collaboration with Central Vermont Economic Development Corporation, Central Vermont Chamber and the partnership to host what we're calling the First Annual Economic Development Summit here in Berry, hopefully at the auditorium in the fall or the winter. This would be a full-on summit, a full day of educational seminars, speakers, breakout sessions, you know, business booths, et cetera, with keynotes from varying BIPOC-based legislative leaders and business owners in Vermont. So that's a goal of ours in, in the fall and in the winter as well. So with that, I'll jump into the marketing presentation. Haggling down to slide two. I talk about here our, our rebranding. Of course, this is going to come out of our strategic planning, but we are targeting fiscal year '24 to be one of really looking at all of what is Berry Area Development, who we support and serve, and going through a rebranding. The work we're currently doing and will continue to do in, in '24, will continue to support and showcase current Berry businesses, proactively collaborate with business owners and innovators with these two initiatives I just gave as examples. Continue our ongoing visual documentation of our initiatives, highlighting, of course, all of our progress and developments to the community to continue to attract external entrepreneurs and businesses to the Berry area. Next slide. Talks about our marketing strategy. Marketing initiatives in fiscal year '24. Next slide. Will be to continue to build our social media base and presence. Highlight and support current businesses in Berry. Continue targeting industry-related digital publications throughout the Vermont. And we'll talk, we'll talk about that in a few slides. The work that we're currently doing with marketing and advertising digitally. Establish connections with entrepreneurs throughout the state. Create a platform to have potential business owners join and look at the available commercial spaces that we have. That's in the works, almost completed. It's kind of an exciting, interactive platform that allows people, users to go in and see what's available and, and look online before making appointments. Continue targeting national demographics to businesses wanting to relocate and grow here in the Berry area. And advertising key local publications beyond Vermont nationally and also internationally as well. Participate in industry-related expos. We talked a little bit about that. And also holding meet and greets with business owners in Berry and surrounding communities. Marketing investments. This is what I indicated a little bit before. This is what we're currently doing and what we're targeting for fiscal year '24. Vermont Public, formerly known as Vermont Public Radio, now Vermont Public. This will launch in early 2024, so in January, in their This Week newsletter. They have 82,000 subscribers, an open rate of about 30%. We did an advertising campaign that just wrapped up with Vermont Business Magazine. This was online in their digital, in their digital web box ad program. From that, we were able to receive 44, almost 45,000 impressions, 20 through clicks at a rate of about 5% with a click-through rate. And then we continue to see really positive feedback and views on our Berry, The Heart of Vermont video, which we launched much earlier this year. And each one of these shows also the cost incurred to the organization. Next slide, business recruitment metrics and goals. So these are just some high-level updates for you on our numbers. In fiscal year '23, which is wrapping up, over 100 businesses were targeted and outreach to this past year to relocate, to expand and/or start businesses here with a rate of approximately 10%. I say return on investment with moves and launches. You'll note the asterix there. We manage all of our projects, all of our outreach, ongoing, past, current, present, future through Google Box, which shows, you know, the losses, the gains to the community and gives a breakout of demographics as well. Fiscal year '24, we're targeting, as mentioned before, some national and some international businesses relocating to Berry. And then just the general ongoing recruitment of Vermont-based businesses as well.
And sorry, I may just to clarify there, let's just call it 100 businesses for sake of. So by 10% return on investment, that was saying 10 businesses either launched or moved or expanded?
Approximately to the Berry area. Yes.
And what's the net increase? I mean, a launch is different than a move. Is it like?
The net increase to the tax base?
No, net increase of business, numbers of businesses. So you say 10, 10% moved or launched. So what's the split between move or launch?
I'm not sure of that. I'd have to get back to you, Jake. I'm sorry. As mentioned, we, you know, we track all this stuff through a master project tracking list.
We were talking about 10 though, right? 10, 10 businesses.
Approximately 10. Yeah. Yeah.
Can you think off the top of your head, like, how many were new businesses?
Sure. I mean, so I'm, what I can just give you is a brief rundown of what we're currently doing and what's, what's recently closed, if that's helpful. I don't know if we want to take time to pull up a multi-page.
I was just thinking you were.
Project list, but I'm happy to do that and share that with you. So right now.
Let, let's just move on.
Yeah. Well, right now, we're, we're actually, this is public information. We're pretty excited. DMS, who I'm sure you're all familiar with, has just signed and finalizing or letting the ink dry, I should say, contract with the FAA, which is kind of exciting. As, as you all know, that stuff takes a little bit of time. So unfortunately, they're not quite ready yet for production, but they will be soon. These are just some, some top of mind, you know, things that are bubbling right now as we speak. We're having second business meetings with a business based out of Burlington who's interested in coming here to launch a soda production manufacturing facility, potentially up in the Whip or maybe some, somewhere down here in the city. We're touring them around. They're also looking at opening up a venue as well for selling their sodas and having live music here on the main, main drag in Berry. We're meeting with them. Talking with a major agricultural grower in the Berry area who, who wants to find space. Looking at another resale clothing. These are just things that are hopping right now. Continuing to have conversations with the Chocolate Factory, who wants to be here on, on our main drag. Little Caesar's just signed a contract for the old Soups and Greens. Optical Expressions is going upstairs on the fourth floor of the Blanchard Block. And, and the list goes on and on. So, you know, a lot of exciting things going on. But, you know, I'll, I'll pause with that. Unless there's questions, I can continue.
I just have a couple of questions.
Yes, please.
So just a couple of questions about the marketing investments. So the click-through rate on the ad seems a little low.
Right. So I'll speak to that. So previous to MA and I coming on, there wasn't really any tracking for marketing efforts. So we're really focusing on digital. Previous to our employment, it was a lot of print and there wasn't a lot of ways to show quantifiable results from that. We're really focusing on, on digital now so we can see the results. And we're, we're kind of testing the waters on what's successful or not. I agree. I don't think the click-through rate is super impressive and that's probably not where I would invest our money in the future.
Thank you. And the other question was, of the viewers of the Heart of Vermont video, do you know who's like your cousin and you know who's like a unique viewer? From outside of Berry? Roundabout.
I don't, actually.
We're, we're going to jump actually, right. And, and I think some of your questions are about to get answered because the next few slides are going to talk about our key performance indicators, which is all social media. And as Shannon just mentioned, is new to Berry Area Development. In the past, a lot of work, a lot of the marketing had been done, you know, in hard copy form. So we're, we're pretty excited about this and the opportunity to track this and show metrics. And, you know, it, it's marketing. So with that, I guess I'll turn it over to you, Shannon.
And before pivoting to the, the metrics, you talked a little bit about promoting the Wilson Industrial Park in Berry Town. And one of my key reasons for wanting to have this conversation at council is because Berry City voters approved, a voter-approved funding allocation of $20,000. Berry Town voters did not approve that. And, and so I want to make sure that Berry City voters get the money, get the services that they have directly paid for and that it's clearly accounted for. And that we're not seeing a whole bunch of promotion for Berry Town paid for with Berry City money. Because when you go door to door and you talk to the, the 70-year-old who's, you can visibly see their house, they're struggling to maintain, they're struggling to afford life. And they're struggling to afford a very high tax rate. They want to know that the money that they're sending to City Hall and that then flows to other organizations is spent as frugally and as wisely as it can. And, and so that's where I, I want to, I want to know that this money is only going to benefit Berry City.
Sure. No, that's a great question. You know, we're here to serve both communities. So I'll answer with that, number one. Our job is to promote and recruit for the city and promote and recruit for the town and, you know, throw the Wilson Industrial Park into that. That said, we all know that the voters approved here in the city and did not approve in the town when it comes to our marketing dollars. Those marketing dollars truly are, you know, this isn't any secret, Shannon's salary. So if, if that helps clarify anything for you, you know, my board, my executive committee has given me the authority to move forward with obtaining grant dollars to make up the balance for Shannon's salary. Hopefully that helps to answer your question. I mean, we're, we're not going to ignore the town of Berry. We're not going to ignore the city of Berry. You know, forming this coalition with the partnership and key stakeholders to ensure that who goes into these vacant buildings and what happens to these vacant buildings in our main street here is something that's done thoughtfully, carefully, and has the voice of our taxpayers.
So, so what I hear is that Berry City marketing dollars that have only been paid for by Berry City voters and, or taxpayers are going to go to fund promotion in Berry Town and that there's not going to be an accounting.
No, that is not what I'm saying, Mayor.
I didn't hear that.
What I'm saying is I've been given the authority to find grant dollars to match the difference of her salary. So there won't be, nobody's going to feel any difference. I'm being fully transparent with you. I'm, I'm going to get a grant, which will make up the difference for her salary.
For Berry Town voters.
That the town didn't fund. So that she can stay with us and do the excellent work that she's doing, serving us and our community and bringing Berry into the forefront, into the modern era in a inclusive and diverse way, if that helps to answer your question.
Well, it, it really doesn't. I would like to see a specified accounting and of what activities are being funded by Berry City voters and make sure that those monies benefit Berry City and don't benefit Berry. That don't, that the Berry City taxpayers aren't paying for Berry Town promotion. That's, that's what I want to see. And it sounds like that's, that's not how you're going to approach it. And that's understandable. That's your, your, your right as a board.
Well, I want to ensure that we keep Shannon on because she's doing a great job serving this community. And in order for me to do that, I need to get grant dollars to fund the rest of her position because the town didn't approve that. So if the city council would prefer that I provide a spreadsheet monthly, I'm happy to do that. That breaks out, you know, our marketing work that's specific to the city. That's not a problem. I'm really excited about these metrics and I'm, I'm excited to finally move things into the digital era. I'm excited to modernize things. I'm excited to be inclusive, without a doubt. So if you need that, I'm happy to provide that. More important to me right now is ensuring Shannon stays with us and continues to provide the work and service that she does. So I'm off trying to find some grant dollars to make up for the rest of her salary. You know, sure, it makes a lot of sense to, to maybe have something that breaks out. Okay, here's what we do for the town on a marketing standpoint and here's what we do for the city. And we can, we can certainly think about that and do that if, if that's needed. Sure.
So just hold. Oh yeah, absolutely.
Do we want to move on to talking about some of our KPIs, key performance indicators?
Please.
Or are there more questions? Yes? Okay.
Yes.
So, so this is, yeah. So next slide, please.
Right. So this is a general breakdown of our three main social media platforms. We're continuing to add to these. We've now included a LinkedIn account, which reaches a whole different demographic, a lot of professionals, and we're becoming more active on that. I think that's really important. We're also exploring TikTok. Since I came on, we've started an Instagram account. Our Facebook was here previous to me and has increased engagement a lot. And our YouTube account on here as well. If we could move on to the next slide. As you see here, since we've, let's see, in the last 90 days, we've gained 51 followers. It is interesting to see the difference. I'm not sure our understanding of social media, but there's a lot of differences between Instagram followers and Facebook followers. It's a different demographic. Facebook, we got a lot of locals and tend to be a little bit of an older demographic. Instagram, we often find more followers that are businesses locally and also beyond Berry. So it's great to, to study the analytics of both and see the difference. Let's see, move on to the next one, please. Our Facebook metrics. It's a little hard to see, being that I can't control this. But this breaks down our increase in followers. Thank you, so I can say it at least. Let's see, this is the last 90 days as well. We're currently at 1,604 followers. I think I created this slide last week and we've increased since then. It breaks down the demographics between men and women, communities within Vermont, outside Vermont, and then outside the country as well. And you can see the little spikes and everything are different, all of our social media content. And it's great to study and see which posts get different engagements. I actually manage four different social media accounts, all completely different from each other. I would say that, oh, sorry, Michael, do you have a question?
Is that 50,000 for the reach?
Yeah, that's 50,000. Yeah, that's the reach.
Wow. That's pretty good.
So as I was saying, I, I manage four different social media accounts, all completely different. This is probably the funnest and most challenging in its own way because it's economic development, which to the general public is not sexy or attractive. And so to try and find ways to engage, engage with our own community and engage with people beyond our community is a very fun challenge for me. So it's sort of, I would say sort of a whole body approach. Because even though it's economic development, we're trying to find ways to appeal to business owners and to potential future residents. And so not only are we trying to focus on housing and, and businesses, we're trying to also just show all of the positive aspects and optics of the city and the town and make it appealing to everybody. And so approaching social media, I'm a part-time, part-time employee, but I, I sort of, I engage and am cognizant of being an ambassador of. am cognizant of being an ambassador of Berry in every aspect of my life. So, when I'm traveling outside the community, whether I'm going to, like, I'm going to the food and the Vermont Food and Wine Festival this weekend. And so, every time I'm at these events, I'm networking with different business owners, and I'm talking to them about, I'm talking to them about Berry. Last weekend, I was at a housewarming party where I met somebody with a nuclear engineering background, who now works for Beta Aircraft. And he said he hadn't been to Berry for the last 10 years. And I got to update him on all the amazing things that are happening here. So, not only is it about social media analytics, it's about finding ways outside the box to represent Berry and to constantly engage with people, not only in the community, but beyond. So, if I'm going to a place in Burlington, I'm taking my kids, this happened not long ago, I took them to Thorn and Root on Church Street in Burlington. It's an acai bowl establishment. We went inside, I filmed virtually the entire thing, I made a reel of it, I shared it on Instagram, my own personal account, which, it shows that I represent Berry in a multitude of ways. And so, I tagged the business, the business sees it, they share it, they tag it, and it's related to 5-plus-thousand followers. So, that's the amazing aspect of social media. It's not only trying to reach people in these aspects, but it's trying to find ways to appeal to everybody and show all the, Berry's not what you thought it was, and it's growing and it's changing. I think that's.
Counselor Shon Bell.
You've probably answered this question, but how does the digital media, or how has it translated to growth for Berry City?
Right. Trying to show the quantifiable.
Do you have a tangible?
Right. Trying to find the quantifiable results of social media for economic development is not easy. So, in this.
It's also admittedly new for us. We've been in a print, it's also admittedly new for us. So, we're excited about this. This is a new venture, you know, moving into the digital world where we can recruit people through these examples Shannon just gave, by reels. We can get people here and get people excited about housing, about development, about businesses through social media is an exciting new world, but it's admittedly new for Berry area development. It's as new as I've been here since October of last year, and Shannon as well. So, starting to track these metrics and seeing what they do is kind of exciting. You know, we're spiking, we're doing some great things. My goal, this time next year, is to just be able to answer that, yeah, here's our quantifiable results.
So, when we have people come in and we engage in these conversations and all this networking, we can ask them, you know, how did you?
How'd you hear about it? Yeah, I mean, right now, we have, you know, the ROI I showed you earlier, over 100 businesses, approximately 10. Great. Well, how do we feed that with social media as well and social media marketing? You know, as we move further and further away from print. Print's still a thing, and we're still doing print, and that is a way to market and a great way to market as well. You know, I hand out businesses cards wherever I go. But, the social media, the online is where everything is going. So, being able to show results that, you know, we've tracked and successfully put in housing developments and been able to help facilitate that and collaborate with other organizations on that, and been able to recruit businesses and all that through social media is.
And a lot of it, I think, is also collaborating with other organizations. So, just last week, we went to St. Albans, and we met with their crew there, and we got to hear all the amazing things that they've done to revitalize their community. And we have intentions of also going to White River Junction and Virgens and hearing, I think that's one of the great things about Vermonters, is that we're innovative.
Manouski.
Yeah, Manouski. We're innovators, we're survivors, and we're also, we have a great collaborative spirit about us. We want to see each other win. So, people are very open to meeting with us and discussing where they won, where they failed, and give each other advice. And I think, like I said before, it's not just about, I think it's important to make Berry look good, Berry residents, because increasing morale here at the core of it all is really important, but also to help other community leaders realize how approachable and wonderful Berry really is. And I think continuing those relationships and building on them is vital for all of us.
So, to Counselor Shon Bell's point, it sounds like you're gonna try to evaluate how clicks or impressions turn into concrete economic development. And so, what systems are you building as your, as a new business opens or a new developer comes in? What systems are you building to be able to link marketing activity to actual economic development?
Well, we use, I use Microsoft Project for everything that I do and the Google environment. It's my go-to for everything, because you can link to the web and Excel spreadsheets and all of that through that, if that's what you mean by what systems.
No, it's like, well, anybody can use a software tool. It's like, what, how are you gonna evaluate?
Well, those tools will allow us to report out, you know, as we are now, and to enhance on those reports out.
So, there's gonna be a standard methodology that you're gonna, when you interact with a business, you'll ask, how did you learn about or become interested in Berry?
About now, yeah. Yeah. It's all done through the Google. I've moved that into the Google environment, because I think that works well for Shannon and I.
Oh, cool.
Yeah.
So, you'll be able to share results next budget?
And with that is also this commercial vacancy database we've been working on, which is hopefully gonna roll out soon for people to be able to use, users that we give access to. It's not, you know, we're not realtors, but we certainly do work with them. So, that'll also be a piece of it as well. And then, I think the last slide was the YouTube.
Right, sorry. The YouTube metrics? This was our most successful video on YouTube. It engaged really well in the community, and this is what our investment in Vermont Biz led to, when they clicked on that link, that this is the video that it led to. And, yeah, we've got, I don't even want to. Thank you. It's on the bottom, actually.
Oh. No, I'm too large.
Right. So, it's reached, it's had 2,234 views. The fun thing about these analytics, and it's different for each social media platform, is that you can see the average view time. So, this is a four-minute video, and the average duration was two minutes and 37 seconds. So, it's fun to see, same with different posts and things that we share, at what point did somebody lose interest? And I think people generally say one minute is a good amount of time before people lose interest. This is great. We got up to two minutes and 37 seconds. The entire video is engaging and sells Berry in a very positive light. But, every time we do something like this, it teaches us more for the next time, which is fantastic.
Yes.
Do you have a breakdown of the views? Like, the views are mostly by people in Berry. The views are mostly by?
We do, oh, let's see, we do. It's not listed right here, but I'm happy to.
Yeah, just wondering if you have that data.
Yeah.
And you're really looking for more click-through engagement. You're looking for, like, when I look at the Facebook chart, you know, clearly something happened in March 21, and after that, what did you do in March 21?
Used the video.
No, that wasn't March. I think that was February. Our most engaging post, I think, so far is the Campo Davino post, which was actually well-timed, because they're trying to sell their business. But that was actually, you know, obviously Bob's a huge part of the community, and people were really enthusiastic to see and hear about his history.
So, that sort of tells you that that was a wildly successful thing, that.
Right. Absolutely.
More like that. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, other questions from anyone?
I'll take down the slideshow.
Counselor Dury.
I just wanted to point out your Facebook results, you know, your, the March 21 post that had the spike really kind of skews your data, because you really have some good numbers between 0 and 5,000 views, really. Almost every day, it looks like you're around at least 1,000 of the reach.
Right.
So, I mean, you guys are doing something right on the Facebook side.
Right. And it's gonna, it's a funny learning experience, again, with economic development, because we're not the Berry Partnership, we're not an easily engageable organization. A lot of our projects are slow burn, you don't find out about it until something finally is concrete that can be shared with the public. So, there's a lot of stuff, trying to find the things that are really appropriate to share with the community, I think, is something we're all tuning in on. And also, I wanted to say, if there's anything happening, people tend to tell me what's going on in the community, but I would always love to hear from anybody if there's things happening that you think should be highlighted or showcased or shared. I can't promise that I'll be there for it, but I'll certainly try.
Yeah, and just to add to that, I mean, social media is obviously, I mean, I'm saying something everybody already knows, is only one component of marketing. I mean, we're here to build coalition, to work in collaboration with departments at the city, at the town level, you know, to do things like host summits and bring businesses here, to work on housing projects and bring housing here. They're all parallel processes that need to happen at the same time. So, you know, this is a simple, basic report out of our marketing and our planning for the next fiscal year, and what we've done to date, and in our efforts to bring our social media, or I should say, our advertising dollars into the, into the online world. So, yeah.
That's the public's money. Any questions from the public before we move on? Yep, Kat?
I have two questions.
Get her to sit up to the microphone.
Is there an equal effort in drawing new businesses to maybe give the buildings downtown a little juj? Because they may not seem very appealing, but with like a lick of paint or maybe not the red curtains blocking the.
That's actually something that I've been working on since winter. I've reached out to different building owners, because I had, in, with inspiration from other board members and other community members, we were talking, this has been actually a conversation since last year, about doing, finding ways to beautify empty storefronts. One of the suggestions was using some of my photography as big blow-ups and showcasing them in empty storefront windows. I've reached out to several building owners. I had the intention of actually going in myself and cleaning out the windows, because honestly, I think that is the best first step to beautifying Main Street, is just getting the windows clean. Unfortunately, after several attempts, I haven't heard back from anybody, but we're gonna keep trying. So, I mean, little things like that.
I strongly feel that there would be a group of volunteers that would help.
Yes.
Like, clean storefronts.
Without a doubt.
That, like, red little snack shop would look adorable.
Yeah, we're just looking for permission.
Right, right.
We completely agree. We need permission.
But this is an open forum, so.
Yeah, yeah. That's great.
The other question that I have is, is there an emphasis to try to find local businesses? I mean, it's great for Little Caesar's to come in, but we have an amazing, two amazing local pizza places on Main Street, plus a Domino's.
Yeah, we didn't seek out Little Caesar's.
I was sharing the Little Caesar's as information for you, but absolutely, we focus on local, we focus on Vermont, we focus on national, international, the whole, the whole thing. But, yes, of course, we want to support our local businesses and bring as many as possible to, you know, to Berry area, for sure. You know, the chains will come and the chains will go. You know, this is information that was shared with us, it's exciting, the space is being filled, it was vacant for a long time, that certainly was an eyesore. But, yes, you know, yes, that's another pizza place. We hear you.
That was my question.
If you could state your name.
I'm Kenzie Kubat. So, I've talked to Shannon, and she's been super helpful as I moved to Berry. My husband and I, very long-term, are interested in, like, opening a restaurant or something, but having called around to every, like, open storefront in Berry in the process, it was really disheartening to just hear, like, how much work needs to be done in all of those buildings. And I'm really excited to hear about the commercial business listing, I think that would be super helpful, and also, like, I've spent some time on your website, just like, grants and stuff that would be available, like, to just have those, maybe it's, like, so specific that it couldn't be listed, but just like, what is out there to make it possible to open a business? Because it seems insurmountable to me, and out of work that needs to go into those buildings. And I think that's probably what keeps a lot of people out of it.
Just so I'm hearing you correctly, are you suggesting that on our website, we also add links to this information we share with businesses that come to us on loans and grants? Is that what you're suggesting, like?
Yeah, and maybe it's out there and I just didn't find it. And Shannon, again, has also.
Because we have those one-on-ones with people, and someone needs assistance, but I like your idea of maybe providing, one of the things we're building, as I mentioned, is this commercial database of available space. So, maybe that could be in the platform where there's, oh, and you also, you know, you have a women-owned, or you're BIPOC, or whatever it may be, you know, oh, there's, these are your options for this as well. Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, or just like, you know, hearing that, you know, every system in a building needs to be replaced, kind of skyrocketing and, right? Like, what is the price point? Like, I'm totally at an information gathering stage, but like, does that mean that I'm responsible for all age-back, redoing the flooring, building out an entire thing? What kind of money is available for businesses that are interested?
Yeah, definitely encourage you to continue to talk and connect, or potentially build out the database. Are there any other comments? Lisa Leota?
I'm really interested in what M.A. said about the Main Street planning and what types of businesses, what do we want our Main Street to look like? And if there's going to be a public process for any of that, and if so, what do you think that looks like?
Well, we just, we just kind of launched the idea, and it was myself and Tracy Lewis of the Partnership that came up the idea of creating a coalition. And when I say key stakeholders, I think this is what we need to, who is currently on the Main Street, I think that would be key stakeholders, who's there, and who, what are people, what are people thinking? What do they want? What do they need? You know, what have we seen that's gone in that's maybe not done so well and left, and why?
Businesses that play off each other well and support each other rather than.
Yeah.
Right. I was just thinking, as far as outreach to businesses and attracting new businesses to our downtown, if the public's gonna have an opportunity to have some type of a forum or to weigh in on that to say.
Sure.
What we think would be really great.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, and I think it's also important not to forget or just to mention this, the consultants that White, that the city has hired, Wyton Burke. I think there's a huge overlay with that as well. I just started discussions with David around the work he's doing, and that's specific, I know, to the Tiff District, which is also great. You know, once that comes through, there's gonna be additional grant money potentially available for the, you know, heat and retrofitting of some of these buildings as well. So, they're all, they're all interrelated, and in my book, none of them should function in a vacuum, and we all need to be in the know, and this, all of this should be a public process for everybody, so that when we go through the process, as we're going through the process of revitalizing this district, it's something where, you know, to use other cities as an example, you can walk through and feel really good about it. And it feels, you know, feels like it was done thoughtfully and carefully and intentionally. Yeah.
I see Jeffrey Tipper Giles and then Jamie.
Anecdotally, the empty storefronts, I, back when I was on council and Berry Partnership, I got permission from all of the empty storefront owners to go in, decorate for, it started, it was gonna start with Halloween and then Christmas, just to keep the storefronts looking vibrant. One business owner let me go into their building and actually do it. The other ones that had said yes just stopped communicating and would not allow it. So, I understand your frustration, because this has been an ongoing thing that I tried to do about six, five, six years ago now.
I figured we couldn't be the first to attempt it.
Yeah.
We'll keep trying.
Jamie.
Yeah, what I was gonna say, for your planning process, one thing that strikes me is that we have Pearl Street Pizza, which is amazing, The Meltdown, which is amazing, Ladder One, which is amazing, but they're not connected at all. So, it doesn't feel like a district at all. So, I'm hoping with the planning that we can look at how to put in some businesses that make it feel like you can walk to one from the other, where it doesn't feel like that. Now, it just feels like you have three amazing businesses that you have to drive to.
Good point.
Yeah, Counselor Stuckel.
Sorry, this is silly, but were you helpful in bringing the Grab and Go to downtown?
We were not involved with the Grab and Go.
Okay, thank you.
It's exciting, though.
Yeah. Nepali food, yay!
Counselor Dury.
What are some of the barriers or difficulties that you've found in working with the entities that we might be able to help with?
The last piece of what you said, that might need what?
That we can help with.
That you can help with.
What are things that we, as a municipality, can help to do to facilitate some of the barriers or difficulties that you guys are having? If any. If any?
Yeah, I mean, that's a really big question.
Sure.
Michael, thank you. I'm not really sure how to begin to answer that specifically. I think, you know, um, the, the work uh most immediately that, you know, the work that I've done to date so far, my interactions with Nicholas is fantastic. It's, it's great working with this council. You're, you're all very responsive and um in my experience, very collaborative and, and willing and supportive. Uh, you know, there's, I think, as everybody knows, it's, it's kind of coming out of a, an, an older era, maybe. That's what I'll just dub it, right? And, and bringing everything into the modern. And with that comes some growing pains and maybe some resistance. I don't know. Um, but I, I think everyone's willingness to work together is, is key. Um, and, and I, I feel that support from, from all of you and certainly, um, you know, I'm looking forward to, to continuing that relationship. Um, you know, I, I think specifically as we get into certain projects, um, I'll be able to answer you more, more directly.
Sure.
You know, there's always challenges with, with projects. Um, and there's always, there's always gonna be red tape and bureaucracy and this and that and whatever else, but um, yeah, I think open communication is key and transparency.
Thank you. And again, I appreciate all your work. As your council lays on, I, I really appreciate everything you guys do in your board as well.
Thanks for the, oh, Tommy.
And um, well, I just wanted to thank you as well. Um, lived here a long time, seen a lot of changes, invested a lot of money in Berry. Uh, and young lady, maybe you're talking to the wrong landlord, because anyone who won't make an investment in someone who's willing to stake their claim, you might be talking to the wrong people. So- So, but I want to thank you because what the two of you are bringing is a passion and an energy that, you know, with all respect to your predecessor, just wasn't there. And Shannon, when I, when I look at the pieces that you post on, on social media, I am trying like hell to learn Instagram. It's like, for, for someone who's my age, you have to learn it, but I, I'm, I'm trying.
Evolving and changing.
I'm trying to evolve, okay? Truly. Uh, but that's what the two of you bring. You bring a passion and you bring an energy that you can't fake. You know, you, you, both of you care deeply about Berry City, Berry Town. I mean, just, you know, the whole central Vermont area. And um, lastly, the uncomfortable part of the conversation, but I want to give you the opportunity. Uh, there was a, a report in the media that was incredibly disturbing. Um, it's hard to believe that, you know, I don't know, if someone just loses, you know, loses, I, I have no idea. Um, it was disappointing, I guess would be a huge understatement. You know, but no one's immune. And I want to let you know publicly and I want to let everyone know that I support you, that I consider that incredibly unfortunate. I was trying to, you know, I've been around, like I said, for a while, and I was trying to think of any meaningful contributions that that person made, and there were none. You know, barely, barely remembered him. His own business partner had, had no idea that, that he harbored these abhorrent views. So I just want to let you know that I still support you, uh, that I will support you. Uh, you know, we're not immune to it. Wasn't that long ago, a former member, member of the city council allegedly embezzled from their employer. So, you know, if you want to make people guilty by association, that's, it's just a narrow way to think.
Thank you, Tom.
I'm, I'm gonna judge you and you on the work that you're doing, and I appreciate the work that you're doing. And thanks for taking my calls at quarter after ten when I call you.
You're welcome. And thank you for bringing that up, actually, cause I'm not sure if everybody saw my statement to the article. We unequivocally completely oppose any individual who degrades humans. Um, I don't really know what else to say other than that. Um, you can read my statement to the article, but I was shocked to hear that information and uh certainly without getting too much into my own personal life, um, was deeply affected by that. That's, that evening, I think I, I was texting with Nicholas until later in the night, um, if it helps, uh, to, to know my heritage. So, yeah, we unequivocally oppose any person who supports any organization or acts that degrade human life.
Those of us who know you and your board and Shannon know that, but thank you for that.
Yes.
And I want to thank you also for taking down all that content um from the prior digital marketing campaign that was rolled out by BAC. I think that was-
You're both extremely upset when we found out. Neither of us worked with the BAC at that time and haven't met this individual, but uh, you were both horrified.
Well, and I think to Tom's point, not to belabor this, I mean, you never know. You workplace, you, you're doing, you walk into a Cumberland Farm, you don't even know what's around you. You, you know, you, you serve on a board with people. You don't know what they're doing, what they're thinking, you know?
But I don't think we should diminish that. It is a professional nonprofit board and that the recruitment-
I'm by no means dismissing it.
Permissions ma- yeah, conflicts of interest matter, ethics policies matter. Um, so I think there's always an opportunity when something like this happens, think, what do we, what, what can we do better, uh, to make sure that we, we're, as a community, we're not in this situation. So, but I, I also want to thank you. Great, great presentation overview. Thank you for sharing uh a little bit about your vision, particularly the Main Street, the Economic Development Conference sounds excellent. It's a partnership with the, uh, the partnership with Partnership, but also the Central Vermont Economic Development Corporation. I think what you heard tonight is that a lot of people carry, care about grand list growth. I mean, that's certainly, when I, if you were to ask me, what is economic development? It's grand list growth, because that uh increases our taxable value. So I'm really, I think a lot of people are looking forward to being, having invited to have a seat at the table, um, and to have agency in their, their cities and their towns, economic development through the, through your strategic planning process, through the conversations that you're gonna roll out, uh, looking at the metrics and, and how they're gonna be benchmarked, how they're gonna be measured as to how do they, how do they convert to economic development. I'll be asking those questions as a preview when it comes time for uh the budget. Um, and uh, and also just accountability to the voters. The, the voters of Berry City who, who are carrying the weight right now, and potentially, it sounds like a grant may carry the weight for Berry Town, but I, I, I strongly dislike when Berry City uh pays and Berry Town gets a free ride. And I think that happens a little bit too much in our two ta- two municipality dynamics. So, um, so accountability to make sure that you're, you're delivering for Berry City residents is really important to me.
Of course.
All right, and with that-
Thank you both.
Yeah, thank you.
I appreciate you.
Thank you, ladies.
Takes us to an update on preparations to address emergency housing transitions.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and uh, this is, this will be brief and it might be outdated based on what's been happening- -down the street, so um, I will get started. Uh, the next slide, Council Wazak, please. Um, so just an update uh on the use of the BOR as a congregate shelter. Uh, and the update is that there is no update. Um, so, um, there's no change from the, no communication from the state since the last council meeting. Um, we last met with the state on June fifth about this, and I updated you at our June sixth council meeting. Um, that was our last um get-together with the, with the state crew. Um, we have, since that time, we had, uh, that's with the AHS that we've been talking about, the BOR. Um, we have heard from BGS, um, and they asked us for quotes about uh work to be done at the BOR to bring the facility up, um, up to code as a congregate shelter. We're awaiting, we've done all that work. Uh, we secured the quotes, um, but we haven't signed off on any work because we don't have a green light from the state to proceed. Um, there's no further information about the portable toilets, portable showers, or ice machines. As you recall, this is the second part, the second and third parts of our letter of interest. Um, the last email from the state, uh, we answered a series of questions. The last email from the state on this was on June thirteenth. So, um, the, what I can share is that we know that the Agency of Human Services, um, they have shared with us that they have received three responses for the staffing RFP. Um, that was due the eleventh, but that's, that's all we know, just that they got the responses. Nothing, um, as of, nothing more than that. Uh, next slide, Council Wazak, please. So just some new dynamics that may have, you know, caused this shift. Um, you know, some of this is speculation, some of this is, you know, we know. Um, but just why is the, you know, why did this hurry-up-and-go process kind of come to a, a halt over the last couple of weeks? Um, and it may be because access to a congregate shelter is just not a high priority for the state right now. So, um, we know that they have been uh working with the people who are recipients of these services and these benefits, and only about twenty percent of those individuals, um, resp- of those respondents said that they would use a congregate shelter. So, um, I think that is probably factoring correctly into the state's decision, um, on what they do and what they don't do. Um, the timing has really changed. So when we first started talking about this and starting briefing the council on this, we were talking about really two cohorts. We were talking about June one and July one, and that has really transformed quite significantly. You see in that little inset box there that um the tiers are, become much more gradual. Um, so we had June one was a thirty, this is household numbers now. Uh, June one, thirty households. June fifteen, thirty-two, that was because two of the motels, um, gave two-week uh extensions. July one now is only four households, so that's really, it's, I know it's very significant for those four households, but from the response, it's, it's, it's a small impact. Um, July twenty-ninth, you may recall, the state granted twenty-day extension, so that's what that's reflecting. That's for the July one, um, families. So there's now a large batch that's impacted on, and exiting on July twenty-ninth. Uh, and then September twenty-third is now the, the largest round of exits, uh, seventy-six households. Um, so I think what, what this is telling us is that, um, may, may be leading to the state's, uh, you know, cooling on the BOR, is that we've, in our conversations with them in a letter of interest, we said it was available to September first. We did tell them subsequently, uh, in, in prior meetings that, look, we can, we can go through the, you know, September fifteenth or so. Our real priority is that we cannot, under any circumstances, have anything there on October first because of ice season. So, um, if you're looking at that inset on the, the, the green box and you're looking at those, um, exits from the motels and you're looking at the city of Berry telling you you have to be out by October first, naturally, uh, the BORs may be less of an option, um, not just because people aren't looking for congregate shelters, but because the timing has also dramatically shifted. Back when we were looking at an all-July-one transition, the BOR was obviously, I think, a little bit more compelling to the state. The other piece is that, you know, and, and, and the state's received ten or more proposals, um, through the letter of interest process for utilizing of the existing facilities in different ways, which may be longer-term solutions, right? The BOR was only ever going to be a very short-term bridge for anyone who was using it because, because we were very firm about our September first or September fifteenth deadline. Um, so if this, you know, if this has caused the state to, you know, this letter of interest process gave the state some more compelling, longer-term solutions that they've prioritized, I think, from the city's perspective, that's probably a win-win. Um, so these are just dynamics that, I think, to explain the, the, the cooling off period, I guess we could call it. Um, and, um, and I think, as I said, this is probably outdated based on what's been happening in Montpelier. I know the, um, there's, there's-
Yep.
Things still going on. So, um, next slide, Council Wazak, please. And this is really the la- this is the last slide. Um, our, our process, our next steps here is we're gonna continue to be accessible and responsive to the state. We've been checking in with them on email regularly, um, saying, hey, we're here. Um, if you need anything, we're here. Um, we're gonna continue to monitor developments at the state level all of today, and uh, I don't, I know the, the House overrode the veto. I don't know if the Senate-
Yeah, they're done.
They, they both did, okay. So, um, and I know there's uh talk of extensions of the program, which also may have happened, so.
Sure, I ca- I, I do have some details, yes.
But yes, so-
Go ahead.
Anyway, we're monitoring them and obviously not monitoring them well from up here. Um, at least I'm not. Um, and then our, our city response continues. We're, you know, working, we have terrific partners. Uh, as we've, you've learned throughout the process, just great, great people to work with, uh, in the Social Services Network. Erica's one of them sitting here with us today. Um, I saw Dr. Finner online as well. Um, and then we're, we're, so we're continuing to work with our partners. We're continuing to help connect people to services. Um, and just generally, our position and our, our mantra to the state has been, look, we want to be a partner. We understand the urgency and we, um, we've said we will drop what we are doing, uh, the minute they, they need to talk to us because we, we know how important this is. So, sort of a non-update-update, maybe, but um, and-
What's the Senate updating? Council Wazak?
Uh, my understanding is that the legislature is done-done. Um, they overrode the veto and they passed, I believe it's H one seventy-one is the name of the bill. It's the former workman's comp childcare sort of bill. Um, I haven't had time to read the entire piece of legislation, obviously, but uh, there will be an extension of the GA motel program for those who are still in the motel. So anyone who has exited on June first or has been exited since June first, uh, or will be exited before July first, uh, is not eligible for extension. Uh, folks will be required to pay some of their income to the hotels. Uh, so there will be a match between the individual using the hotel and the state. My understanding is that the state, uh, is that an individual will be required to pay thirty percent of their income to the motels, uh, consistent with basically a rent payment. But at the same time, the state is going to renegotiate the prices for those hotel rooms. Uh, folks are required to work directly with case managers, uh, on whatever they need case management for, and they're required to uh look for permanent housing as well, which join the club. Um, so, yeah, so there, the, those are the top lines that I know now. Uh, but my understanding is that the budget's been overwritten and that the legislature's done.
Did you say how long the extension's for?
That was my question.
Don't remember.
Extension till April of twenty twenty-four.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, uh, Erica Rail.
Sorry, Erica Rail, Homeless Task Force. Um, what Council Wazak is correct. They'll, people have to pay thirty percent of their income if they have income. And right now, currently, um, we're looking at possi- folks that are currently in the hotels can stay in the hotels, but we're possibly with the end of uh VRAP and other housing programs. We're looking at new homelessness, um, folks that are homeless, um, so those folks, um, will not be part of the homeless, uh, hotel programs. So even though, yes, it's a win, it's also, we have to look at some of our losses as well. So, um, yay, but we still have folks that probably won't get this news and are leaving the hotels. So yes, we have these numbers, but folks, um, probably already left the hotels and those numbers quite possibly are inaccurate. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions for the manager or council?
Thank you, manager.
Yeah, thank you for the update and the-
And thank you, Teddy.
Rapid legislative update, too.
Been watching.
So, it's definitely, uh, been quite the, the journey that we've all been on as a state and a municipality, thinking-
Me too.
We had to respond.
Watching every day.
With that, that takes us to an item from Council Booton, a discussion of the composition of the newly-created Cemeteries, Recreation and Conservation Committee.
Yeah, so, you know, as we got a bunch of people that are coming up for cemetery recreation and conservation, um, I've spoken to the chair of the Cemeteries Committee, and I'm gonna actually ask him to come up, uh, the honorable, the one and only Giuliano Cecanelli. Um, I didn't hear any fanfare.
Can we strike that from the record, please?
I can't spell any of those words, but I can spell Giuliano Cecanelli.
Yeah.
Giuliano Cecanelli, I am the chair of the Cemetery and Parks Committee. Um, I'm here to ask the council to reconsider, um, the makeup of Cemeteries, Recreation and Conservation Committee into two standalone committees, Cemetery and Parks and Recreation. Um, from what I saw two weeks ago, uh, there was an abundance of volunteers, but only two seats, uh, for this committee. And I feel that, um, adding the recreation as a standalone committee would allow that committee to do a better job than what we would be able to do as Cemetery, Recreation and Conservation.
And, you know, I, I've talked to a couple people and there's actually individuals that may step down, um, due to the, the merging of these committees. And given the fact that we've got so many high, and I think of high-energy individuals that have applied for it, you know, and I think that, um, you know, it, granted, it's, you know, it's, we look at the cemetery kind of as a park because we go to it to enjoy the space. Um, I think it's a little bit different than recreational, um, in my opinion, and I agree with the, the chair's assessment of it, and I think we should separate the two.
I agree. I'd like to get it on the agenda at our next meeting.
So that would mean that we would not vote on those items tonight? The, I mean, we would still do the interview and then make the appointments?
We could.
Yeah.
Um, or, you know, people may have, or, I don't know, sometimes in life, things work out perfectly. People may decide, I want to serve in the cemetery, and others may decide, I want to serve on recreation. But I, I think I do understand, G, that there are those who have a, a passion for our cemeteries for a very different reason. And I suspect that's why you serve. It's, you don't really look at it as a park and you don't, you probably see the grass, but that's not really what you see.
I, actually, I don't see any grass now.
Touche, Jeff, touche. Um, so I, I understand, and I understand, um, you know, some of the, some of the appointees that we have interviewed and, you know, the passion that they have for the history and the tours that they give, uh, and the work that's done and the monuments that are there and the people that are there. Um, I get it. I totally get it. I absolutely agree with you, and I will vote yes.
So it sounds like there's a proposal to have an item, um, on next week's agenda to discuss, uh, or to, um, consider the, um, separation of Cemeteries from Recreation and Conservation, uh, Committee.
Do you want to make a motion? Do, do you want me to make a motion to put it on the agenda for, is it next week?
The eleven.
Mayor has the authority to put it on the agenda on its own.
I think, yeah, I think- We're looking at new homelessness, folks that are homelessness. So those folks will not be part of the homeless hotel programs. So even though, yes, it's a win, it's also, we have to look at some of our losses as well, so, yay, but we still have folks that probably won't get this news and are leaving the hotels. So yes, we have these numbers, but folks probably already left the hotels and those numbers quite possibly are inaccurate. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions for the manager or council?
Thank you, manager.
Yeah, thank you for the update and the.
And thank you, Teddy.
Rapid legislative update, too.
Been watching.
So it's definitely been quite the journey that we've been on as a state and a municipality, thinking.
Me, too.
How to respond.
Watching every day.
With that, that takes us to an item from Councilor Booton, a discussion of the composition of newly-created Cemeteries Recreation and Conservation Committee.
Yeah, so, you know, as we got a bunch of people that are coming up for cemetery recreation and conservation, I've spoken to the chair of the Cemeteries Committee, and I'm going to actually ask him to come up, the honorable, the one and only Giuliano Cecanelli. Didn't hear any fanfare.
Can we strike that from the record, please?
I can't spell any of those words, but I can spell Giuliano Cecanelli.
Yeah. Thank you. Giuliano Cecanelli, I am the chair of the Cemetery and Parks Committee. I'm here to ask the council to reconsider the makeup of Cemeteries Recreation and Conservation Committee into two standalone committees, Cemetery and Parks and Recreation. From what I saw two weeks ago, there was an abundance of volunteers, but only two seats for this committee, and I feel that adding the Recreation as a standalone committee would allow that committee to do a better job than what we would be able to do as Cemetery, Recreation, and Conservation.
You know, I've talked to a couple people, and there's actually individuals that may step down due to the merging of these committees, and given the fact that we've got so many high, and I think of high-energy individuals that have applied for it, you know, and I think that, you know, granted, it's, you know, we look at the cemetery kind of as a park because we go to it to enjoy the space. I think it's a little bit different than recreational, in my opinion, and I agree with the chair's assessment of it, and I think we should separate the two.
I agree. I'd like to get it on the agenda at our next meeting.
So that would mean that we would not vote on those items tonight? The, I mean, we would still do the interview and then make the appointments?
We could.
Yeah.
Or, you know, people may have, or, I don't know, sometimes in life, things work out perfectly. People may decide, I want to serve in the cemetery, and others may decide, I want to serve on recreation, but I think I do understand, G, that there are those who have a passion for our cemeteries for a very different reason, and I suspect that's why you serve. It's, you don't really look at it as a park, and you don't, you probably see the grass, but that's not really what you see.
Actually, I don't see any grass now.
Touche, Jeff, touche. So I understand, and I understand, you know, some of the, some of the appointees that we have interviewed and, you know, the passion that they have for the history and the tours that they give, and the work that's done, and the monuments that are there, and the people that are there. I get it. I totally get it. I absolutely agree with you, and I will vote yes.
So it sounds like there's a proposal to have an item on next week's agenda to discuss, or to consider the separation of Cemeteries from Recreation and Conservation Committee.
Do you want to make a motion? Do you want me to make a motion to put it on the agenda for?
It'd be the 11th.
Mayor has the authority to put it on the agenda on its own.
Yeah, I think.
You're going to do it, I'm going to do it.
You know, councilors have the right to put things on the agenda. I, I'm fine discussing it. I think it goes back to, I think we need to think about why we went with this approach, and it was that, the whole reason behind this was to back up what a staff was asking us to do, is that to reduce the staff burden on the number of committees that they were. So I think it's important to keep that in mind, in balance with how important it is to, to encourage citizen participation and engagement. So I think that's where the balance, would you say that's where assessment's at, manager? Yeah. So, but I'm certainly open to having the conversation, so.
Yeah, and I, Mayor, if I might, I just would note that we may not be able to appoint people directly. I know that the appointment policy is pretty strict on the application process timelines, et cetera, so I just, council may have to think about that as well, because I know we have an abundance of, I just, I'm not trying to be the party pooper, I'm just saying that exists.
Party pooper?
Yeah, so, sorry to throw that at.
Would the council have the ability to make the decision now?
I'd want to hear from Jeff and Stephanie since they're the ones directly impacted by it, so, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's not warranted, G. Not being on the meeting, it wouldn't, I mean, could we? You could do it and ratify it, but it's not a warranted item. It really wouldn't be the right thing to do.
I just wanted to ask the question.
Yeah.
I also wanted to ask the council, and part of the request, the conservation aspect of it, that is huge. That is something that I am not really understanding what to tackle, you know? Conservation of the entire city, conservation of a particular area, and I would ask the council to hold off on assigning that to anyone.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I see Kat and then Sonia Spalding.
Kat Allen, it feels, as a new person on the outside, wanting to be involved, maybe too high-energy.
No, that's not what I meant by that.
It seems counterintuitive to siphon parks away from recreation. Like, wouldn't it be nice to, like, have people create events in the city parks and use the public space? Those two things seem to go hand in hand, that it seems squiffy, for lack of a better term, to, like, have that stay with cemeteries and not with recreation.
Thank you, Kat. Sonia Spalding.
I would echo that concern, but my, my question is about people who put their application in and are interested in the committee, and then if you are, it sounds like you have a timeline that you have to appoint people, but if there are people who apply and would like to be on it but would prefer, for me as an example, I, my interest in this committee was recreation. So, but how do you know that for every other person?
Yeah, I think we'd have to go back at it again.
Well, see, that's why I asked you if you'll be doing that.
Yeah, I think, well, you know, we have to follow our policies, so that's what we lead by example, by following the rules that council establishes for itself, so it sounds like this proposal may require us to then notice the vacancies again, give everybody an equal opportunity to apply for the newly-established committees, and then circle back to appointments, so. Councilor Dearing.
Can we just ask that, if you're speaking, you come up to the microphone so those that are online can hear you?
Oh, thanks, good reminder. All right, so we'll have this on the 11th and discuss it. Looks like we won't be taking any action tonight on, on that committee unless there's clear objection.
Never mind.
All right. Okay, so that takes us to volunteer appointments and reappointments, and the order that we have on the agenda is CV 5 or 1st, we have, oh, yeah, yeah, Ellen Kay.
I have a procedural request. Two of the people who are applying for the Diversity and Equity Committee need an accommodation. One can't drive in the dark.
Okay.
And it's last on the agenda, so I'm wondering if that could be changed.
I think that's okay.
Yeah, that seems reasonable. Any objections to moving up, DNE?
Yep.
All right, so we'll take that as the first item of appointments for an accommodation. So the first up on Diversity and Equity is the Chair Mulvaney, Joelle Mulvaney, who's in. And I see, welcome, Chair Mulvaney, please take a seat. Well, welcome, and yeah, if you want to speak to why you would like to be reappointed, then continue on with the Diversity and Equity Committee.
Great, thanks. About 20 years ago, I was involved in New Directions for Barry. It was a community coalition. The coalition received a grant from the Office of Juvenile Justice to focus on youth risk prevention, specifically alcohol, tobacco, and other use. The Vermont Department of Health helped to educate us about the community asset approach, and we were schooled in the use of data, especially from the department's Youth Risk Behavior Survey. That drove our coalition's efforts and assisted us in maintaining the coalition with future grants. As we developed programs over the years, we dug deeper into the root causes of substance use and addiction, realizing the connection between the fear, anxiety, and depression caused by trauma and substance abuse. We began to make the link between some troubling demographics of our city and substance abuse, between the trauma caused by food and housing insecurity, historical trauma such as racism and intergenerational poverty and substance use, between a lack of connection of feeling like we matter, like we belong to community and substance use, abuse. When I looked at the last published pre-pandemic youth risk behavior survey, particularly the question about feeling like they matter, students reported only 57% feel like they matter. That means almost half of our youth do not have a sense of belonging to their community. The greatest asset to be nurtured in the city is that people feel like they belong, like they're included. That's why the diversity and equity work is so essential to the city's future. There's a direct connection between equity and a just society, between diversity and an inclusive municipal government through its policies and practices. I applaud the city council for establishing the city's Diversity and Equity Committee to explore and advise the council about ways to make our, to make or change our policies and practices that result in a more inclusive and welcoming community. I also have become aware of people who may share the concept of making our community a better place, but not its relationship to the work of the committee, to the efforts to confront racism, poverty, homelessness, and discrimination. We have experienced attacks on our work and on our, and on the characters of committee members. Much of our energy has been sapped by dealing with hostility, bullying, vilification, surveillance, extreme scrutiny, and downright meanness, with no grace for any errors or missteps along the way. I doubt other committees are treated this way. Many committee members have left or suffered fear, anxiety, and depression due to the stress. In attempts to tamp down the aggression, the committee no longer videotapes our meetings. It's certainly legal for others to do so, but it is irresponsible for those tapes to be put on YouTube and other social media, knowing the repercussions for the good volunteers who are doing this work for the city. We've received hostile and threatening messages from people outside of the city and even outside of Vermont as a result. I've been in touch with Tony Campos from Central Vermont TV to broadcast and archive meetings in the future, knowing a reputable media outlet will be responsible for the content. All of what I said here is why I want to continue this work, this important work for our city, and I'm requesting two things from the council. One is to be reappointed to the committee. The other is to change the name of the committee from Diversity and Equity to Justice, Equity, Diversity, Inclusion, and Belonging, which will better reflect our goals and objectives. This title also aligns with the current recommendations of the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, and our committee has already voted to approve the name change. Thanks.
Move to approve.
Second.
Well, the move to approve the name change, what's the motion? Are we, we're not going to go through all interviews?
Move to approve the, the appointee, and, no, I can't move to approve. It's not on the agenda. I will support it, but it would have to be on the agenda next week.
We can come back.
I've already forgotten what you said.
We have five openings for this case, so in this case, there's no competition, so I think procedurally it makes sense, in this circumstance, to move forward on an appointment before we've interviewed all candidates, but just to prime, I think it only is fair to the applicants of committees where there are contested seats, that we listen to all applicants, and then we make motions on appointments, but in this case, there are.
I understand. I made, I made my motion. In this particular case, I support, Ms. Mulvaney and I don't always see eye to eye, and that's okay. Sometimes the hardest conversations are the best ones, but she, in my opinion, hasn't been without mistakes, but she's done a very good job. And as you mentioned, the work that you did 20 years ago, I remember that work fondly and absolutely supported it. So I think in this case, seeing as this particular appointee is the chair, I will make that motion.
And I'll second, understanding, you know, Mr. Mayor, with all due respect.
Well, now that I look at it, there are contested. There's four applicants.
Yes.
For three adult, for three seats.
Yes.
So we're, I, I just want to be clear that you're not going to give everybody an equal opportunity to be heard, and that's, if that's what you want to do, I don't think we have any policy against it, but it seems, in my view, not very considerate to all the applicants to not hear them out.
Wouldn't be the first time I've been accused of that. I'm okay.
All right. So there's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
There is.
So, Dearing.
So I'd just like to know, you know, how you intend to continue running the organization or the committee in following the Constitution, in allowing people to speak without threatening to mute them, without the violations of not allowing individuals to record an open meeting? I have some serious issues with some of the legal things that have been going on with the committee, and I'm actually the one that requested that CV TV record your stuff.
Yeah, I appreciated that.
No, and I think it's important that we have transparency, and I think that more transparency with the Diversity and Equity Committee can go a long way in bringing people together so we can understand what we're facing and how we can really work together to get those things done. And I feel what we've seen, from my experience with the Diversity and Equity Committee, has been short of a circus, where there really has been a lot of issues that should have been worked out or could have been worked out that haven't and have really defined some of the public persona of the committee, and really that is my utmost concern, is the transparency of the committee going into the community and how the community can be involved if we, as a group, aren't willing to record meetings so that people who aren't able to attend them at that recorded session actually be able to obtain them and be part of it.
I hear you. It's not that there's an objection to recording the meetings, it's what happens to that videotape once it is recorded. So I think the solution would be to have a Central Vermont TV record it, they put it in their archives so people can watch it later. People can certainly come to the meetings, and I think if you, there's only two meetings that, that we didn't record, and the second meeting was one that CV TV recorded, so that is in their archives.
Right.
So if you look at the actual meetings, which actually I've done because I had to reduce some of the minutes, you'll find that it is a totally open meeting. What you're talking about and what you're referring to are those things that have happened outside of the meetings.
What I'm actually referring to is when Councilor Booton was going to record your meeting.
Right.
And that is in his constitutional right, in an open meeting.
Absolutely it is, but he also has a, well, anyone recording it, not just Councilor Booton, has a responsibility of what to do with that tape afterward, knowing the kinds of things that we have experienced. I'm not lying about that. I have an example here of a letter that I received from the post office, if you want to take a look at it.
I get lots of mail, I get it, but you also understand.
All right, I don't want to get into devolve this, devolve into acoustic back and forth, and that's the tone that I'm starting to hear.
I hear you.
Well, I'm asking for accountability.
Yeah.
And transparency.
I think you made your point. Councilor Sean Bell.
I'm, I find it upsetting that you're being accused of not being transparent and accountability. I, from what I've seen over the years, you've put yourself forward in a very difficult situation, under extreme pressure, with a lot of eyes on you, in a way that takes wording and shifts it to meet their own needs. And my fear is that if we are not really careful about how we treat our committee volunteers, it can backfire on us completely. And to assume that it is support for some of us to come and, I'll use the word disrupt, the meetings, I'm, well, horrified is understatement, but I would like to see more. I think we are capable of more, and if we are really calling ourselves civilized, I'd like to see us treat each other differently. That's the best I can do.
Joelle, I'd like to say thank you also. I know you've reached out to me, I'm the city manager on occasion, asking questions about rules of procedure in an earnest, in an earnestness to want to do things the right way, to follow the adopted policies, open meeting law, the Constitution, or the rules of procedure that apply. As with any committee, there can be a learning curve along the way, and each time you corrected yourself, I also know that we've lost some, some good members of this committee because they felt bullied and targeted. It's pretty unacceptable behavior, in my view, that a sitting city councilor.
Okay, listen.
Would go.
This is bullshit, and I'm not going to sit here and take this.
I'm not.
That is unacceptable, sir. First of all.
No, 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 it is unacceptable. This is disparaging.
No. Gentlemen, it's not disparaging. How dare you?
I'm going to call the question. You are both out of order.
No, no.
Stop it.
Tom, this is fair.
You're out of order.
Not fair.
Both of you.
I'm going to call the question.
Both of you, stop it.
Somebody has asked for the question to be called.
Thank you.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor of calling a question?
Oh, can I call a question? I called a question. Yes, aye.
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 There's a majority then debate, two-thirds majority. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. That takes us to our next.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I do want to just make sure I captured, were there any noes for the motion?
I was the a for the, for the motion.
So division, Councilor Booton.
Congratulations, Joelle, and I hope it was memorable.
I was confused.
There was no division, I voted yes both times.
Okay, so everybody voted yes both times. I just want to make sure the minutes are reflecting what was.
No, Councilor Booton voted no.
On the motion to appoint.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Correct.
Yes, no.
All right, so that takes us to our next member is Christopher Roberts.
You'll excuse me, my vision is bad. I'm the one who can't drive after dark, so I very much appreciate the accommodation.
Are you okay with time, sir?
Pardon me?
Are we okay with time and driving it? You're okay? Okay, just checking.
Fortunately, these are the longest days of the year. Yesterday, today, and tomorrow, actually. Mayor Hemrick, Manager Stororelli Castro, whom we've not met, I've not met in person, it's nice to see you in person. It's nice to see you in person. Clerk Dawes, Counselors, Counselor Lozan, I don't believe we've ever met in person, so...
Pleased to meet you.
Happy to meet you. My name's Christopher Roberts. I'm one of the original members of the Diversity and Equity Committee. I applied to the committee because diversity and equity issues have always been of interest to me. I am gay. I was born in Berry in 1965. My parents purchased a house where I lived about nine months before I was born, so make of that what you will, but anyway. Growing up in Berry and being gay was tough, but it wasn't just Berry. Growing up in the '70s and '80s, being gay was pretty tough. I got bachelor and master's of arts degrees in history, and then went on to law school at Northeastern. Northeastern is probably the most progressive law school in the country, and I was proud to go because, you know, I thought, and still think, that working in the public interest is really a good thing to do. So I started law school in 1991. God, I can't believe it was so long ago. And we were the first class to have a course called Law, Culture, and Diversity. And it wasn't always harmonious. Diversity by its nature can be very acrimonious, you know? I think the challenge is to honor each other's diversity and differences while not being divisive about it. And that's a big and challenging prospect. But I think our committee has done a pretty good job. I can't say enough good things about Joellen Mulvaney. She recently did a summary of a history of Vermont that she has written, and it was top-notch, it was first-rate, and I can say that as someone who knows a little bit about I think our community, I know our community has issues with diversity, but so does every community. And I think that we've made progress and will continue to make progress. And I'd like to be on the committee for another three years to assist in that effort. So that's pretty much all I have to say.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions for Chris? Counselor Dearing.
So part of the Diversity and Equity Committee is also ADA, correct?
ADA?
ADA.
Yeah, now it is. We have not yet incorporated their materials into our website, or, you know, we're still working on that, I guess.
Do you have any insight as far as how you may be able to help? Because this is a new capacity that's added to the committee, and we do have some other people looking to be appointed. So I'm just curious what your capacity would be as far as looking at ADA things.
As far as looking at what?
ADA things? Things that the ADA committee previously looked at?
Yeah.
That you guys would look at now that you could bring a lens to?
It's absolutely part and parcel of what we do. I can't... I think, in some ways, that disabled people face more discrimination than most other groups because they're... It's visible.
Sure.
And we, as people, as humans, we discriminate on the basis of what we see. And if you're not, quote, "whole" or "normal" in some way, that is a liability. So, yeah, I think we definitely should, you know, address these issues a great deal. I've worked with ADA issues somewhat in my legal career, and, you know, I'm anxious to see what we can do about that.
Are you a lawyer?
I am a lawyer. I am not licensed to practice in Vermont. I am licensed to practice before the Supreme Judicial Court of Massachusetts. However, I am going to take the bar exam in February, God forbid. There's a lot of reasons why I have to take the bar, and I can't be waived, and so...
Thank you for that overview, Chris.
Thank you for sticking with the committee, Chris.
Oh, and I want to thank all of you for your service, you know, in a, what could often be a thankless job. So, you know, I appreciate it. And I can't say enough good thing about, good things about Carol Dawes. I have never seen anyone so professional and competent, never.
Well, that clinched it, Mr. Roberts. I would move to appoint Mr. Roberts to a two-year term.
Second.
Thank you.
It's a three-year term, though, right?
There's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Isn't it a three-year term?
Two-year term.
Okay.
Hearing can say none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries.
I just before, thank you for your work. For you and Joellen, thank you for the work you do on the Diversity and Equity Inclusion Committee, or whatever is going to be called next. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Chris. Nice to meet you.
Very much.
All right, that takes us to Raylene Minier. Welcome.
Raylene Minier, Berry Town. Make sure I'm very transparent about that. Tried to buy a house in the city, not happening. Outbid 13 times. But I am interested in the Diversity and Equity Committee for Michael's question. I mean, that's why, the ADA compliance. My uncle, Mike Minier, was actually the pioneer in the state of Vermont for ADA compliance. Worked, spent his entire life doing whatever he could. He was a quad, quadriplegic, and he faced many adversities in life. As somebody who has worked in nursing for many years, almost always with elderly, Alzheimer's or dementia patients, amputees, veterans, we have huge inequities in what we can provide in the city and what we have for accommodations here. And as an amputee myself, I would like to work towards some changes, and, yeah, that's why I apply.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Yeah.
Counselor Sean Bell.
What do you personally bring to the table vis-à-vis diversity? Not just in terms of disability, but in terms of other aspects of this that have, you know, they use words like racism, sexism, ableism. How... Tell me about you and your experience personally.
Well, racism, I actually have quite a bit of experience with in my family, as someone who has family members who have adopted children from many other cultures. And watching some of the things that they have gone through, watching, some of them have had, some of the children have had great successes. Sam Fuller, he, a lot of people know him, he sells his art, he has a foundation that he started, Sound of a Smile. He's just one example. And then, but another family didn't experience the same thing at all. And I don't know if, but those family members that didn't experience the same things also grew up in a different time. I almost feel like, in a way, we've gone a little bit backwards because Sam grew up when my kids grew up. And the kids that are in my family currently from different cultures, we have, I feel like they're having a harder time now than Sam did in the late '80s and early '90s. I feel like we've gone backwards a little bit. And that's, it's a shame. It's bad that they feel bullied and like that they don't matter, that they are called names. There have been circumstances. I'm not oblivious to the fact that it's in our school at all. And I know that, well, they talked about it last meeting, there, maybe that circumstance itself hasn't been factually, you know, but it does exist, and I know it exists. And the same with the LGBTQ community. I have very good friends that are married, same-sex couples, that have children, and their children sometimes face the same sort of bullying and of, but not, not just the children, but the parents themselves as well. And we need to work on that. We are the same. And none of us are, you know, none of us are perfect in that way, and we're, I think we're all learning, but we all need to learn together. And we all need to just figure out how to do that, I guess.
Counselor Stokewell.
I was looking at some of your Facebook posts. One, you seem to be having quite a disagreement with Joellen. And another, you say you don't think there should be sex in the schools. And I assumed that by that you meant sex instruction in the schools. Could you tell me more about what you meant by that?
Yes. So sex in the schools in, absolutely in the instruction of it. Like, I worry about, not, I'm not even sure that I'm going to call it instruction. Sex in the schools, what kids can do without the knowledge of their parents. That's where my concern comes in. I don't want, I don't think that that is something that we should be doing in school. I don't think that we should be instructing or teaching that in school. No, I think that that's something that is, should be between parents and family and children and their parents, not a teacher and a parent.
So to be, so you don't think there should be any sort of sex education within the schools?
No, sex education is okay. I'm saying that if you're going, I don't think that a guidance counselor, a child should be able to come to a guidance counselor, and a child should be able to get care or to get any sort of, I think that the parent should be involved. Sex education, the way I took, when I was in school, is not like what sex education is now. Where I'm talking about making a decision without your parent, making, I feel the same way. If a 14-year-old came to me and I was a guidance counselor and said, "I'm pregnant and I want to get an abortion," I would want that, I would want the parent involved in that. That's all I'm saying, is that there are some things that, they're children, they shouldn't be deciding those things on their own, and they definitely shouldn't be deciding them with a teacher or a guidance counselor that doesn't know, that knows very little, has them for only a little bit of time.
Can you tell me a little bit more about that? Like, are there specific, so abortion is a decision, if there is a pregnant teen, they should have to go to their parents?
Well, I think that their parent should be notified. I don't think it's a decision that a child makes with a teacher. I don't, I have a very hard time with that. I have a hard time with the fact that, I don't think that a child should make that kind of decision with a teacher. No, I don't.
I could ask a follow-up.
Or any, any of those sorts of things.
Is that something, is that something that you've heard of happening in Berry City?
I actually know of one person. It didn't happen, no. It didn't happen because the teacher did not allow it to happen. But it was a conversation that was, that was had with another staff member, and, but it was not, but a teacher actually stepped in and said that it wasn't their role.
I would just encourage you, and, you know, Raylene, I know you, we know each other.
Yeah.
I have respect for you. I was kicked out of my house when I was 15 years old by an abusive mother. And I'm a straight white guy in my 20s. So it is, I hear what you're saying, and I understand what you're saying, but when we're talking about extremely at-risk youth, very often, they're not coming from supportive households. And while, yes, legally, under 18, you're basically the property of your parents until the courts say otherwise, they're also, you know, I knew by the time I was 14 years old, I was not in a safe living environment at all, because my mother suffered from substance use disorder, a whole list of other things. So just, father does not always know best, is what I will say.
Other questions?
I just want to follow up on the, it seemed to be a dispute between you and Joellen, in which you seem to be quite angry with her, so I'm just a little curious about it.
Well, I got quite angry with her because I had, there was a post on Facebook by a young woman who asked, "Tell us some things that you like about Berry City." And I said that I liked that the people in the city always rally around each other when there, there's trouble, a fire, a flood, anything. We all seem to jump in and rally together. And I certainly do that. I have a, I have a platform where I can do that. I do it all the time. I help, I, myself, will step in and do whatever I can, whenever I can. And she messaged, or not even messaged, I actually could show you on my phone, I have screenshots of it all. She wrote on the page, asking why it was that somebody from Berry Town was allowed in the group to begin with, and, and basically gave me a hard time and said I should get That's uncalled for, it was really unnecessary. Somebody asked, "What if, what if a Maegan, she doesn't live here in the city, but there's great things that she loves about the city, does her opinion not matter?" Does, I thought that we want people from outside of the city to love the city. I thought that's, that's the whole thing. That isn't, that what we're looking for, what we're pushing for? And because I live in the town, and, and then I said I lived in the town, and I was further pursued by that, and it did make me angry. It makes me very angry. When somebody asks me where I live, I say Berry. I don't say Berry Town. I don't say Berry City. My zip code is 05641, just like yours. And I work in the city, I eat in the city, I come down, I attend all of the functions for the partnership, dances and bingo and every, this is where I live, this is where I grew up, this is where I want to be. And if I need to sit in the back 14 feet of my yard because that's in Berry City while I attend a meeting, then that's what I'll do. I'm not, I'm like, literally, it just, it's crazy to me. And I, and I know that there's been a separation, but maybe we should, yeah, well, maybe we should, maybe we should need to fill that gap, too, because it's just a really crappy gap that we have. We shouldn't have that fight with each other, city, town.
And so was that, and then Counselor Sean Bell?
Yes, unrelated to any of that, I try to spread the love with committee appointments. And so we, you're an incumbent on the Planning Commission, and you're applying for the Diversity and Equity Committee.
Both.
Do you have a preference?
I would rather stay, I would rather stay with the Planning Commission if I'm going to choose between the two, because I've already invested a year there and...
Yeah, but understand, and that has nothing to do with you at all. That's just when we have, you know, when we have a bunch of contested seats, contested seats, you know, where we can fit people in to maximize participation is the puzzle I try to put together.
Counselor Sean Bell.
Just, if you are on the committee, I'm hearing that you have a fairly strong online presence. And if you are on this committee... And if you were on this committee, how would you use that presence to help maintain, I'm going to use the word peace within the city?
I think that, I think that we do that all the time already, that we do, I mean, I spend my everyday, all day, pretty much promoting everything about this city. And I work really hard at it. And it's, it's not easy. As Shannon said, it's not easy. There's a lot of people that think a lot of really bad things about the city. And it's in, I spend a lot of my time defending it.
And I understand that.
And I would continue to do that.
But I guess the context of my question is that some of your Facebook posts have been not, they don't have to do with the city. They have to do with your beliefs about diversity, your beliefs about what should be, what should be taught in schools, et cetera.
I don't post stuff about what I think.
Well, you were just talking about.
Right, because I was asked the question, but I don't post those things on my Facebook page. And my Facebook page is public, and anybody can see those. My opinions, as far as that goes, I do express my opinion on the mic. But I also am always open to conversation and have actually engaged many times with people that I totally disagree with. Teddy and I disagree several times. We talk, we talk a lot, Michael Booton and I disagree about all kinds of things, but we're really good friends. Joe Rail and I, I love talking to him. You want to have a really good conversation, and he's like a really good guy to have a conversation with. Do I agree? No. But I have the ability and capacity to listen to him with an open mind, and sometimes I even take away that much. And that much actually means a lot to a lot of people. And that's the way I feel about it. I just want to be open.
Thank you.
Yeah. One last question.
Counselor Stockwell?
So, Christopher Roberts was talking about how difficult it was to grow up gay in any place, but, you know, gay in Berry. So, from what you're saying about the schools and the role of sex education in the schools, thinking that you would think that if someone came out to a teacher, that that, that teacher or that staff person should notify the teacher, should notify the parents?
I, I have an issue when it comes to a medical procedure, doing it on your own, without, without speaking with a guardian first. And maybe if, and, and maybe not, and if in Teddy's situation, maybe it wasn't a guardian. But I think there needs to be somebody involved in the school that is more than a teacher, that has only known a kid for a very short amount of time. When I was in school, I had the same homeroom teacher and guidance counselor all through my years of high school, all through my years. That isn't the way it happens anymore. The kids shift all the time, and there's no consistency of somebody that can truly know the child or the situation. How can we determine that that child isn't, how can any person that doesn't know the child help them make that decision for them? How do we know that it's the right decision, or even where they need to be at such a young age? When we say that, that's an adult decision, not the decision of a 14-year-old. Coming out is one thing, saying you want to alter yourself at that age is another. And that's the way I feel about it.
Right, thank you, thank you. I think that's clear. Thanks.
And then one thing that I've noticed in your social media or on the talk show, like, for instance, you talked about not wanting to extend equal protection to an American citizen who'd been detained in Russia because of her stances on racial justice.
I said that?
Yeah, it was on, on one radio show. I understand you may have called the policy that the council just adopted last few weeks ago racist. You name-called with me, and I felt like you, for instance, you've said, "This man," I use that term lightly, "knows nothing about this city or its history."
I did say you do.
Maybe that job better suits him, he can go shit in the woods with a, with a bear.
I did say that.
That did seem a little.
Those are the values, or that, that escalates conflicts. It's not, it's, it's certainly not, that's why I'm a no vote on your appointment. I just don't think it's, it's going to make a committee that has struggled even more conflictual, and so I won't be voting for your appointment.
Yeah, I didn't say anything about Russia. I did say those things, and I was very angry with you at the time. And, and sometimes I don't think that you do know enough about the city, and you say some pretty shitty things about the city. I actually, even the BADC and the Partnership, and I think that you say some pretty shitty things just as much as I do.
Any other questions for?
Yes, so you, you have applied for the Planning Commission.
I have.
And you understand, I mean, you understand the demands of both, that, you know, the committees take time. There's work that has to be done outside of the committee. If you are appointed to both committees, you're confident that you could fill those, fulfill those work requirements?
Well, I would rather do just one of them.
Yeah. You'd rather do just one? Yeah, and I don't have enough time to talk about all the bad things you said about me, but, you know, but I get over stuff. That's a really cool thing about me, it just kind of bounces off. But thanks, thanks for your service.
All right, is there a motion? There's a motion to appoint.
Well, I don't know, I'm not going to phrase it that way. But whatever, maybe I'll withdraw any motion. Yeah.
Actually, there, there is a method to my madness. I appointed, you know, and I said this three weeks ago when we started this process, I lean heavily towards incumbents. And unless an incumbent sits here and gives me a reason not to appoint, if there are a sufficient number of seats, generally, I'll make the appointment right after we interview the incumbent. In this particular case, I believe we have to interview, there is one seat remaining. It is a one-year unfinished term. So, for that reason, I would like to hear, because Ms. Mulvaney and Mr. Roberts, they, they were incumbents. These two, Ms. Munié and Ms. Farrell, they are not incumbents, they're.
So, there's a motion.
I'd like to wait, if we could.
To wait for.
To wait until we interview Ms. Farrell.
Wait through the motion, all right. So, that's, next up then, is Alice Farrell.
Good evening, Alice. Hello, good evening. I am Alice Farrell, and I do reside in Berry Town, but that's an interesting situation there. When we first came to Vermont 13 years ago for my work, and we're looking, we rented in a nearby city and decided that that particular environment was not for us, and we started looking and came over here right in the midst of the big dig, and were very much attracted to Berry. And I was thoroughly surprised to find out that my house on the hill, even though it was called Berry, was not in the city. It was in Berry Town. I didn't know there were two separate municipalities. I thought it was all Berry. And have been dedicated to that when I had the opportunity to retire, and we are still living here in this community and intend to be here for however long we are able. It has been my belief to carry on what has been my belief throughout my career and throughout my volunteerism, that public service is the highest calling that one can do. Since I was 15 years old, I have been a member of the Catholic Worker. For those who are not familiar with the Catholic Worker, it is a community-building organization dedicated to service to individuals. And throughout that time, I've been involved with a lot of diverse, discriminated against, marginalized folks, and dealt with it with my co-members of that actual worldwide organization as best as we could to fight against those particular aspects of our world as we know it. And when I saw the opportunity to be part of the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, Belonging, and Welcoming Committee, I immediately thought that that was a, an opportunity to extend what I've been doing in the community on other boards and as volunteer in other agencies. So, here I am, ready to serve.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Counselor Stockwell?
I also took your Facebook post on the Berry Town Republicans. And in one, you post about the Diversity and Equity Committee, and you say, "This speaks for itself." Now, I wasn't sure what aspect of the committee meeting speaks for itself, so I thought I would ask you about that.
I think it speaks for itself in that it appears that sometimes not to have a good grasp of what its goals, objectives, and tasks are. And that needs to, that is something that I like to think of as a specialty throughout my career in dealing with that. For 20 years, I served on a Planning Commission in the Adirondacks, where we raised our children, and I was involved in the education system in that particular area. And you have to be able to bring things to the table that integrate with everything. Diversity, equity, inclusion, you'll have to excuse me because I'm from Massachusetts, and I talk with my hands. But diversity, equity, inclusion should permeate everything. When you talk about committees in the city, various committees have particular goals and objectives. The Animal Control Committee deals with the dogs and the cats and the chickens, and the Parks and Recreation deals with keeping the green spaces and making sure the children have things to do and things like that. So, diversity, equity needs to be infused into all of those things, including what the city council does. And that's an extremely important aspect of it, so that it isn't an isolated, standalone trying to change the world all by itself. It needs to work with the agencies, the other committees, the administration, and the community members.
Counselor Shumbl, then Counselor Wazzaq.
I, I agree with you that ultimately, it would be ideal that it could permeate everything. That would be an amazing thing. However, if that sort of attitude is not permeating it, how do you have the conversations in a way that is going to build a different spirit throughout the whole community and is going to move things forward despite really, I'll say, difficult doesn't even hold a candle to it, have conversations that are very hard for people to have?
My career has been involved with having difficult conversations. I was 32 years in special education. So, the first thing you have to do is you have to be cognizant of your audience, who you're talking to, what you're bringing to that conversation. And you have to be knowledgeable of what you speak. You cannot just come in and shoot from the hip. You have to have done the homework, you have to done, have to have done your research, and know what it is that you want to accomplish, maybe not in one meeting, maybe not in 10 meetings, but what you want to see as your end result, and to bring people from where they may be in a negative situation through that process to a positive outcome.
So, were you on the committee, would you change how the committee is working? I just heard you say, "I believe," something to the effect of not feeling that the committee is, is addressing this in the correct way. Would you change or try to change the direction they're going?
If it serves the community, yes. If it's something that's negative that needs to be turned into a positive, yes. But just to be a bull in a china shop and come in and say, "Oh, I think I'm going to change everything, throw it up in the air," that's not the way you accomplish anything. So, you work within the process, work within the programs to accomplish what might need to be done. And it may be, when you have those difficult conversations from different, differing points of view, it may just be individuals coming at the same, looking at the same goal, but from a different angle. And to, to bring that together, and again, asking the question, what is the goal, what do we want to accomplish, and how are we going to do that? And if you're always, if people are always hissing and spitting at each other, they're not accomplishing anything positive.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I agree with you completely about diversity, equity, justice. It's a foundation. It's not, it's not a one-up, you don't do it.
Right.
And then it's done. It's a foundation, it's an ongoing project. So, just to sort of, if I could, in defense of the committee, they have, they've developed an equity tool, which city policies and other committees have used to examine the work that they are doing, as well as the fact that the committee was successful in securing a grant for, what, $10,000, I think, to have these large community conversations, to try and move people from where they are to where we all need to be. And so, my question is, you know, what specifically, you can't do everything all at once, you can't do every, you can't be everywhere, you can't do everything all at once, but, so how do you square that, not being able to do everything all at once and be everything to everybody, with, you know, your comment earlier about, what specific things, you know, do you think the committee should be doing that they're not already doing?
I think they need to pick their battles better.
For example?
Well, in individuals, if you start getting involved in individual conflicts, individual to individual, you're not achieving the goal of the committee. And so, that, that's a huge piece, to be able to function as a committee, so every, have clearly stated the goals, have everybody on board, that this is what we're trying to achieve, and what is appropriate for discussions, for being on task, being, accomplishing a goal. And making sure that each of the committee members recognize those important pieces of a committee puzzle to do that. So that if people start getting off task, if people start complaining about each other on the committee, then that's not part of their role. They're, so they need to be brought back to the idea, to the belief that if we're spending time being negative among ourselves, we're not accomplishing what we need to accomplish for the community. Because people lose interest in community organizations that get off task and get, get lost in the weeds. And you want to have, with something like diversity, equity, go on, you know, again, whatever, whatever it ends up being called, you want to have the community being interested all, at all times, so that it is moving the community forward.
As a school board member, what did you do on diversity, equity, inclusion issues? And have you gone to the Berry Town Select Board to ask them to create a committee?
No, I have not, because we do so much together, the Berry Town, Berry City, there's already so much that is shared. We share the school, we share the churches, the commercial district, heck, we even share sewer and water. So, you know, we share so much already, that if there is one committee that's worked, that's playing in that direction, it probably is wiser to have one committee than to spread it too thin and have diversity and equity committees all over the place. And I think that's also the tendency, from just my reading of what's going on in the world, that's the tendency of large organizations is to combine.
And so, what concrete actions did you take as a school board member for diversity, equity, inclusion?
Constantly. I was constantly lobbying for my community, which is the special education community, to make sure that those students were included, integrated, had access to what was going on in the schools, and. on in the schools and how they were accessing their education.
And you didn't feel the budget that you proposed would adversely impact special education?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Stockwell.
I have the same question that I gave to Raylene about, what do you think the role of sex education in the schools is?
If you're talking about health education, the, as the kids refer to it, the puberty discussion, that's part of a curriculum. That is a standardized curriculum pretty much across the United States to have that. There are other things that I'm concerned about that students might not be able to recognize or internalize that might actually scare them. And so I think that's important, that it all be handled appropriately, in a known fashion, again, not shooting from the hip, not having anything that you're having some strange and unusual organization come in, but recognized organizations, recognized activities, that's all part of education for kids.
Can you give me an example of an organization that you, can you give me a concrete example? Something you wouldn't approve of?
Not off the top of my head, I can't, no. But I think, I think, again, that that's important for parents to be involved in as well, to make sure that the school is informing parents, even though, despite a recent guidance document that was published by the State Education Department saying that in certain instances, it is okay for schools not to notify parents. So, and that's guidance from Agency of Education.
That you would abide by?
If it's guidance from the Agency of Education, yes. That was, that's my group. That's why I came to Vermont.
There are no additional questions. All right, thank you so much. All right, there are motions.
Supreme Court nomination here.
I hear no motions.
I think.
Motion for appointment. We have one seat, one year unfinished term, noting, Raylene, your answer regarding you're the incumbent, and as Teddy said, I think, what'd you call it, spreading love?
Spread the love.
I would move to appoint.
She's not an incumbent on this committee, and we're not considering.
No, no, no.
Commission right now. We're considering the Diversity and Equity Commission.
Yeah, no kidding. Yeah. I can follow a council meeting. I did it for a dozen years. I would move to appoint Alice Farrell. You just let this discussion go on for an hour, and you're telling me to move along in 30 seconds? I would move to appoint Alice Farrell to the one-year unfinished term.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
The nays have it. That takes us to.
That's how we're rolling tonight.
Central Vermont Fiber. So we have one applicant for Central Vermont Fiber, and I know everybody is getting late, and.
So I would move to appoint Raylene Munié to the one-year unfinished term on the Diversity and Equity Committee.
Second, that.
There's a motion and a second.
What was that again?
To appoint Raylene instead of Alice Farrell.
Oh, to the diversity.
To the Diversity and Equity Committee, one seat, one year unfinished.
Yeah, we have an available seat, and we have two applicants.
And a second, any further discussion?
I have some discussion. I'm just curious why some of our other people didn't, weren't asked the same Facebook questions that some of the other people were. Just to note, you know, that some of the questioning this evening really wasn't equitable or any of those things that we're talking about. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Because it's pre-planned.
Any further discussion? All right, there's a motion and a second to appoint Raylene to a one-year unfinished term. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
The nays have it. That takes us to the Central Vermont Fiber. We have one applicant, Amanda Guston.
And Amanda's online.
Good evening. I'm up on the Zoom screen, sorry about that. Hello?
Yeah, and I'm going to actually start timing people a little bit more, just to try to keep, to keep on track, and I'll answer your question, but if we can, try to aim for like two-minute responses for things. And I'm sorry I didn't do that earlier, I'm just not on my, top of my game tonight.
So, Mr. Mayor, without us appointing either individual to that appointment, what is the next step in that process?
Well, under the policy, the next cycle, we notify openings for those seats, and applicants can apply.
So essentially, we just had applicants apply, and we turned them all away, correct?
That's correct. Well, we didn't turn them all away, we turned some.
Well, we turned, but we did it in a diverse, equitable, and welcoming way.
So, Tom, so we're on Central Vermont Fiber. Amanda, if you could speak to your motivations for applying and how you'd like to serve Berry City?
Certainly. Thank you for having me this evening. I have previously served on the Planning Commission for Berry City, as well as the City Manager Research Task Force, and timing was such that I decided it was time for me to move on from Planning Commission, although I deeply, deeply enjoyed my work there, and am interested in the Central Vermont Fiber appointment to their governing board as representative of Berry City for a couple of reasons. One is that I am an historian, I'm a very much a humanities, little arts person, but my entire rest of my family are engineers, and I grew up with my dad's workshop, always tinkering with early Internet pieces. He insisted we all learn to write DOS before we could access a computer. So I very much have that in my background, in my interests. When Central Vermont Fiber first first established, I thought right away Berry City's an obvious place for it to expand. We have a dense community that is often left out of questions of providing access to services like this. And I think that there's a role for a strong voice from Berry City on the board, now that they have begun their work of addressing the most rural components of their work to the places that don't currently have any Internet, much less fiber Internet. I think that there is an important role for a voice from Berry City on the governing board to make sure that fiber comes to Berry City in the near-term rollout, so that folks across the city can have access to community-based, affordable fiber, which is, as we all know, we're hearing to you on Zoom, crucially necessary for the ways that we conduct both our personal and our business lives in the 21st century. And my timer tells me that is two minutes.
Thank you. And it's worth noting that this is the biggest state infrastructure project in progress right now, and we'll take questions, Council Deering.
So my first question is, Amanda, what do you feel is affordable Internet?
Sure. Ideally, I would love Internet to be, it would be great if there was some kind of policy for it to be a percentage of a person's income. Right now, my understanding is that the Central Vermont Fiber rollout costs are somewhere between $60 and $75 per month, which is significantly less than I know I personally pay right now through Consolidated Communications, which is about $100 a month through fiber. I am not up on what cable or DSL costs right now, but relative to commercial costs, the community-supported infrastructure that the fiber organizations are rolling out is less in cost, so that's a start. The question of what's truly affordable, I think, is an interesting and thoughtful one. I would, we'll see where that goes, but that's my start of the answer.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Counselor Booton?
Yeah. So, don't worry, Amanda, I'm not going to throw you under the bus. I'll make a motion to approve, point you to the CV fiber.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Thank you for serving Berry City, Amanda.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to the next is the Cemetery, Recreation, Conservation Commission. We have one remaining interview. We've conducted four, and so Marina Zanleoni, did I say it right?
You did.
Okay, all right, well, welcome. Thank you.
Nice job. I see some familiar faces. Councilman Booton from a few years ago, and Carolyn, and Tom Lozón, nice to see you again.
Nice to see you, ma'am.
This is my 11th year serving on the Cemetery Committee. I started when it was the Cemetery Commission, and now we are a committee, and then Cemetery and Parks, Cemetery Recreation. I get lost in the titles, but I started Born and Berry, Raised and Berry, Schooling and Berry, Parents and Berry, Grandparents Extended Family, all Berry, Stone Carvers, Berry Grant Association people, so granite's been in my DNA and around the table with conversation. When I went away to school, I majored in Physical Education and Health, which is a little far-fetched from granite, but let me go a little further. Went on to do graduate work in Guidance and Counseling and Mediation. I spent summers doing recreation in St. Albans-Semont, and I was there for 40 years as a phys ed instructor, Physical Education and Health, and Special Education Instructor in phys ed. And we were one of the first schools that had an all-inclusive physical education program, and which I'm really proud of that, because everybody got everything that everybody else got, so it was really nice. That being said, the committee that I'm a part of is a very collaborative, respectful group of people. Do we argue? Absolutely. Do we solve it? Always. And it's just, it's a really nice give and take. It's a productive committee. We meet monthly, we take a break in two bad months of the winter, and not to say that we're not individually working on little pet projects, and I enjoy it. I have a passion for it. And in a recent meeting, we were speaking about what's important and why we do it, and why we like to do it, and if I mention that I'm on part of a cemetery committee, oftentimes you'll hear, ew. And it's so much more than that. And one of our committee members mentioned that when you walk up to a grave, you're entering someone's life, and you become a part of that, and we owe it to just preserve that and keep it beautiful. And I grew up hearing about Hope Cemetery, Hope Cemetery, how beautiful it was, and I don't think I really appreciated it until I was in my 20s, going back and looking, and even more so to learn what it takes to keep it that beautiful. It's hard to hold a weed whacker for six hours, and yet, people do it, and they ride the mowers. This year is a full staff. Unfortunately, we don't have a lot of grass to mow due to some, you know, issues with grubs. That's on the mend, you know, that's in play. It's going to take some time, but I'm very invested in holding people's feet to the fire that we need to hold to the fire to make sure things keep going forward, that hedges are trimmed and debris is picked up, and I'm proud of Hope Cemetery and Elmwood and St. Monica's, who, St. Monica's often gets left out sometimes in conversation, but not in our meetings. It's just a reverent place, and it's an honor to be a caretaker of such a beautiful area. And I hope I'm reappointed for year 12.
Your passion really, really comes through. One question I ask of all the members was, given that there's a lot of change in the industry around passing related to cremation or natural burial, are there any things, are there things that you think councils should be keeping on their radar or the committee should be working on so that, so that our committees, our cemeteries remain up to the times and the consumer demands?
Well, I think if, if you know your community and you get to know your community, and the biggest thing is to listen, and it's a very uncomfortable subject to talk about, and unfortunately, we talk about it when you have to. And so there's a lot of information out there of natural burials and the columbariums, and we've talked, we've had those discussions in our meetings, we've had natural burial discussions, which for some are just not, and for some, it's beautiful. And I think the more information as a committee we can gather, then the more we can share when we meet people. Because most of the time when people are in the cemetery, they're not there to have a good time. It's not, it's pleasant, but it's a very painful pleasant, and you have to listen, and sometimes you have to mediate. Maybe someone's not happy with what their grave looks like, but most of the time, if someone's angry, there's a real base there of hurt and pain and a little fear. So I just think listening is important in gathering information. Some states have really elaborate programs with alternative burials, and we've discussed them in our meetings. So I guess the more information's always the better to pass on to folks.
Thank you.
And to be more open, I guess.
Are there other questions?
And I don't do Facebook. There ain't nothing to do with it.
You're in the right committee, it's okay. It only happens with another committee.
You might get seen tonight.
Wow.
All right. Are there any other questions, Counsel Booton?
So I'm wondering, given the circumstances, there's two incumbents, two open positions, and we're going to be discussing whether or not to split the committee. The current people that are already on there are Cemetery Committee members, is that correct?
Yes.
So, I mean, if we don't split it, I'm probably going to go with the incumbents anyway. So I think that since you're the last one, I'll make a motion to appoint you and Mrs. Gollander to the Cemetery Recreations and Conservation Committee.
Second.
And then we can certainly have the conversation about splitting that off next time.
So there's a motion and a second to appoint the two incumbents to this committee and then have a discussion next week about.
The 11th.
The 11th. Thank you. Splitting that off from the Recreation and Conservation piece of the committee. Is there any further discussion, Council Deering?
I just want to say thank you for your reverence, for those passions, really, like.
You're welcome.
Means a lot. Thank you.
All right, so there's a motion and a second, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. That takes us up to the Development, thank you so much.
Thank you.
That takes us up to the Development Review Board. We have two open seats. The DRB is assigned by Ward, they must be Berry City residents. For Ward one, we have one applicant, Jeffrey, two for Giles. Thanks for sticking with us.
Come on, Jeffrey, smile.
I'm sorry, I told you to come at 7:00.
Well, the email said between 6:30 and 6:45, so I think we're right on time.
The more things change, the more they stay the same.
Well, I do have to say that, being here tonight, I was like, wow, nothing has changed. At all. How are you all?
This is getting a little spicier.
You weren't here for the chicken debate.
Why do you want to be reappointed to the Doma Reboard?
Because I actually enjoy it. It's very rule-based, and I like that. I, I mean, there are times when we let our emotions, like, okay, well, you know, this applicant has, but it's very rule-based. It's, the staff here, Janet and her team are great to work with, it's easy, for the most part, to say yes, no. Like, there's not, there's not a whole lot of back and forth and personalities that have to get in the way. Now, do, sometimes I think we ask questions that are way out of our purview, sure. Do I call it out? Every time. And it's something I enjoy doing, and I'm been the vice chair now for two cycles, so.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Booton, second by Counsel Wazak. Any further discussion? All right, hearing and seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thanks, y'all.
It's worth the wait.
It looks like the docket's getting busier, so.
Yeah.
So, it's a good thing. So we have Ward two next, we have an incumbent, David Huff, or Ho?
Huff.
Huff, got it. Welcome.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Well, thank you.
Welcome.
Past my bedtime.
Yeah, I know, right?
Well, I'm glad you guys are doing this. I, as a senior member, almost 23 years on the board. It's good that you're going through the applicants again. Because, you know, a lot of times aboard over the last two decades, I've seen people come and go, some that really didn't really belong there. They were there for the wrong reasons. And as Jeffrey says, a lot of times you'll hear questions come out of people's mouths that have nothing to do with the DRB, you know. And so we waste a lot of time sometimes doing that stuff. And I love what I do. I've been a Berry resident for 33 years, raised my kids here. Don't plan on going anywhere anytime soon. And that's it. That's my spiel.
All right, well, thank you. And we have, if we wanted our interview to conduct, are there any questions for Mr. Huff?
Nope.
I like what we do. And I'm also a very rule-based person as well. So it's nice that, you know, that's what our job is. Our job's there, you know, on that board is to go by the rules and regs of this city. So there's, there's really no, there's no waiver. If you stay there, you're, you're in the, you're in the books.
Right.
So.
You can go, sir.
Yeah. How long have you been on again?
23 years.
23 years. Okay. So I do have to ask about the quorum issues that we're having with the DRB.
Yeah.
There's been a few absences, and I'm just curious if, if you want to speak on those.
Well, over the years, I've missed, I've missed a few meetings. But for the most part, I'm usually there 80% of the time. I've had a couple of months where I, where I've been out. But for the most part, yeah, and that has been an issue. And that's a tough thing, too, is getting a full board to begin with. We've struggled with that forever, you know. And so when I hear you guys having people that you're turning down for positions, scary. Scary, scary hearing that. And it's scary hearing you guys fight with each other, too. I mean, we have our disagreements on the, on the zoning board. And I've, I've been heard on the record more than once saying, I'm not here to make friends. But we keep it civil, you know. Even, even when I'm sitting there and I'm hearing these questions that are coming out of people's mouths that are like just totally off the wall, I bite my lip and just suck it up and let them say their piece. It's just, I mutter to myself when I walk out.
Councilor Dearing?
So you've been serving on the committee for a while.
Yeah.
What would the committee lose if they, if we didn't reappoint you?
Well, they'd lose a lot of knowledge. They'd lose that, that firm support. I'm, I'm, sometimes I'm the go-to guy when it comes to breaking bad news to people, I think. I think it's easier for me sometimes because I'm, you know, hard-spoken and some of the board members aren't necessarily as abrupt or, you know. I worked for probation parole in the state for 23 years. And my boss always told me, my message is great, sometimes my delivery sucks. But his message is always good, you know, always. And I treat people fairly. I do, I'm fair to the bone. I'm there for the citizens of Berry. I want, I want to help those people get what they want. You know, you own your property, you work hard for it, you pay heck, taxes are up the butt, you know. You got the right to do stuff, you know, as long as it's not out of the bounds of what you're, what the city wants from you, you should be allowed to do it. And some of the frivolous stuff that goes on, the arguments in the DRB and stuff, some of the questions you hear, it's like, oh my God, what, you know, why are you even here? You know, you got to read the books and know what you're here for, so.
Great answer. Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Councilor Stockwell?
So, just curious, what's frivolous or what's off the wall?
Well, sometimes you get people asking questions, you know, about heating systems, what kind of window you're using, you know, stuff that doesn't, doesn't have anything to do with our decision-making, you know. It's just, it's just because they want to know. They're only on the board because they want to know stuff about what's going on, not because they really give a shit about zoning.
No, that seems clear. Thanks.
And so, so when there's an absence, and maybe this is something we probably should ask everybody, but as, you know, I'm sure you're empathetic to the customers' experience.
Yeah.
That they put their application in, they, they, all the notices have gone out. There's a timeline. And then they show up and then there's not a quorum to hear the. So are you finding that most people are notifying Janet ahead of time?
I, I believe so. I think so.
People?
I believe so, yeah, yeah. It's been, you know, since the COVID thing, it's been, it's been more so, you know, everybody online and stuff, internet has been more so, I think. But for the most part, yeah. It's hard when you got, when you got a board with only six members on it, sometimes five, six, maybe. You know, and you got people going on vacations and whatnot and people getting sick. So, yeah, it, it's a stressful thing. And I've even told them on, you know, if I'm not there on some certain night, don't be afraid to pick up the phone because I know I've missed a night or two over the years sitting there on TV watching it, forget all about it, being the first Thursday. But now, we, now we have the iPhone. You program it in, it reminds you every, you know, you can't forget. So everything's digital nowadays, so it makes life easier for everybody.
Thank you. Well, we have one other applicant for the seat, but thank you.
Hey.
Thanks.
All right, so the next up is Jamie Bauer, who is, and you're also an applicant for the Planning Commission. So Jamie, if you want to speak to your motivation, I think you, in your application, you may have said something about you have a preference for one over the other or not?
She listed planning first.
Planning Commission first.
Yeah, preference for Planning Commission, but I'd serve either. And I can use the same spiel for both, so I can save us some time.
Right.
I live in the city of Berry. I have over 20 years of community development experience, about 10 in a municipality, 10 in a nonprofit community development corporation, and one for the city of Shaker. I have a master's degree in urban planning. If you're looking for, for housing, I, that is my specialty. I've created and administered probably over 30 different housing assistance programs. I've overseen new construction, demolition, and over 75, bringing back to life about 75 vacant and abandoned homes and putting them in the hands of homeowners over the course of those years. I've also worked on small commercial projects, bringing properties that like, dry cleaners that have environmental issues, bringing them back to life and finding owners. And I have experience in the zoning world where, when I worked for the city, I was part of the staff of the Planning Commission. When I worked for the CDC, I sometimes opposed and sometimes supported proposals for planning and BZA. And we also helped our small businesses and other nonprofits with big packets together for both commissions. So I want to, I want to serve my community here now, so.
Thank you. Any questions, Counselor?
How long have you been here?
I've been here for about six months. It took us a minute to find a housing.
Curious. Thank you. So moved?
No further questions. There's, thank you, Jamie. There's a motion to.
Motion to approve?
Appoint.
Appoint?
Jamie Bauer?
Yep.
Is there a second?
Okay, so, but there's, there's one seat.
There's one seat.
Oh, there's one seat.
There's only one seat.
And so Jamie's first preference is the Planning Commission. So there's a motion.
The non-adjournable revenue is the most.
Yeah.
Can I ask a procedural question of the council? As speaking as someone who has had an applicant who has gone to a DRB meeting and they didn't have a quorum, and it's Vermont, and we've got this great four-month construction season and everything gets pushed back, why don't we have an alternate, an at-large alternate on the DRB so that if three members are on vacation, they have an alternate they can call in so that they could more easily hit their quorum?
Yeah, so, thank you, Counselor. That's a great question. Janet and I have been talking about that, given the recent quorum issue.
Yeah, I'd like to just, I'd like to do.
Yeah, I think we need to do the bylaws change. And then I, I'll double check with Janet. I believe the DRB has to do a bylaw change. And then we could go through with an appointment process. But that's absolutely something we've been talking about because it is a real challenge. It's.
The DRB has to do.
I believe that's, I believe that's right.
Air bylaw change, which is like a 30-day pro, wouldn't necessarily help this year, but it could help. It's not a charter deal, is it?
Yeah, and I, I'll double check with.
No, DRB has, has statutory.
Yeah.
Bits and pieces, so.
And I, we may be able to appoint midterm for the DRB. I don't know if it has to be a July.
Yeah, because I think you can, you can fill a vacancy until the next appointed round, so.
So Janet and I are working on that, Counselor, because it is, it has definitely been a challenge.
So I officially withdraw my motion and appoint, and where do we go now?
Well, I'd like to make the motion to appoint Mr. Huff. And ma'am, your interview was, was incredible. I, I just, as a matter of course, I always choose to reappoint an incumbent unless I'm given a reason not to. But you're going to be the alternate because I'm going to make that motion in a month or so. If you're, if you're willing, and I, and I sure hope you were. So that's my motion, Mr. Mayor, to appoint Mr. Huff to the, to your, to the, excuse me, four-year term.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Motion carries. That takes us to the Planning Commission. And so this is where we have quite a few applicants. First up is Rosemary Avril.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Like the chorus, the Greek chorus.
Good evening.
I come in peace.
Also with you, Rosemary.
Rosemary Avril, good evening. Thanks for this opportunity to be reappointed to the Planning Commission. I've been on the commission for a year. We had a rookie group come in last year, about four of us, I think. And it's, it's really, it's been an honor and I've enjoyed it a lot. There's a lot to learn for sure. And we're reminded at every meeting by our chairs and the veteran commissioners there. You know, my notes, we're really a cohesive group. And my notes suggested that it was the chair, chairpersons. But when Amanda was there, I was thinking she's been a real big part of that committee. So I thank her, too. The commission was awarded some grants, some grant money, which is going to be great. Obviously, the housing crisis is going to be the top of the list, I would assume. And also the North Maine and Summer Street Plan. So assuming I, I may be reappointed, I'm looking forward to, to being involved in those critical projects. I guess that's about it. As far as my qualifications, well, I've got a year under my belt. I was a planner, albeit an event planner, but problem-solving, thinking, working together, together collaboratively is some of my specialties. So I look forward to it and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Rosemary Avril?
How many vacancies are there?
There are five seats.
On the Planning Commission?
Five three-year terms.
Okay.
Seven-member body.
With eight applicants, four of them being incumbents.
Okay.
Yeah.
Seven.
Seven, right.
Seven, seven, thank you, yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Are there things, Rosemary, that you think, now, having been on the Planning Commission, that are working really well and things that might need to shift for it to function better?
Well, I think the chairs have been, have done a great job. I was open with you in an email exchange about our not meeting numerous times. And I don't know if it was staffing, I don't know, I don't remember or recall what the situations were. But certainly, we've been doing a lot of discussion. We did neighborhood site inspections. We've been talking now about the housing issues, the, you know, parking and so forth. And then, again, with the North Maine and Summer Street Plan, that will be interesting because I read it, going to refresh my memory. And there's work to be done, certainly. So I look forward to that.
It's nice that you say that because it does feel like this is, this is going to be a really,
Yeah, we're going to be.
Important year for the Planning Commission.
Yeah, I think so.
Because there's the RACE grant, which is the Transitory Development Grant, $150,000 from the Chittenden County Regional Planning Commission. You have grants for, yeah, the North Maine, Summer Street, as well as bylaw modernization. It's a tremendous amount.
Yeah, exactly.
Of work and.
Well, it will be good to get into it.
Yeah.
For sure.
Councilor Dearing?
So, Mrs. Avril, what would the Planning Commission lose if we didn't reappoint you as an incumbent? Same question I asked the other incumbent.
Well, I'll tell you, a year worth of work on that committee. I mean, learning is, you know, it, it takes quite a bit of time and knowledge. And I would say that would, you know, that you would lose a year of, of a commissioner being up to speed on certain things.
Okay, is there anything in particular that you feel that the city would be at a disadvantage at over the last year if you weren't included on going forward?
Well, I think we're all replaceable.
I disagree.
Let's face it.
I believe we all have our own places in, in, in everything that's going on. Now, I ask that question because you've been working on the committee for the last year. And I wasn't sure if there were any projects that you were working on within the committee that would maybe not go forward as well if you weren't part of that committee.
Well, I, I like to be working in groups. That's, again, been my whole career. And I think it's, it's, I'm sorry. Brain cramp here. Okay, that's not a good thing.
It's getting late.
I'm ready for bed myself.
We were here at 5:45.
I asked you, I threw you a tough question.
Yeah, you always do.
I do.
Mm-hmm. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Repeatedly.
So are there any projects that, that you're currently working on with the committee that would lose out essentially without having that year of information or input that's already been put into place that we'd have to kind of resume if we appoint another individual?
Well, I feel you would have to resume. And I think maybe Joe would probably say the same thing or any of them. We haven't been assigned any committee work as such. We've, and maybe that's been done on purpose because there were so many new people. But, you know, I'm up to the challenge, whatever, whatever committee assignments are, are given by the chair. Happy to do it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions for?
Counselor? He, he got me here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks a lot.
Next up is Joe Real. Hey, Joe. Oh, I might, yeah.
So, yeah, I'll kind of start just by echoing kind of what Rosemary started with. You know, it's, I came on at the same time she did. In a time of a change, it was a lot of new members. And it's just been kind of a big learning experience and just kind of a, you know, kind of a new thing. And I came on, I was originally interested because I wanted to, to take power more in what was going on in the city, and that's still true. And then sort of echoing again, it's like just looking at those different projects we've been working on, you know, the different grants. It's been really good to be a part of those, you know, with the initial steps. And there's still work, more work to do on them. You know, like the municipal grant, the, the modernization. Another thing is also the, the S-100 bill that's currently going through the state because that's going to impact, that's not something we're working on directly, but it's going to impact what we're doing because it could, you know, could very strongly affect what we decide to do with the modernization grant especially. So there's all that. As far as what I think I bring to the committee, it's basically kind of the same as what I said last time and it's pretty much the same people here, but I'll just kind of repeat it. You know, I kind of have a long history in my professional career of being a very strong collaborator, working well within a team. Everybody has their different role. I have a very strong kind of problem-solving and troubleshooting. I think that's really important. I have like a very specific approach I use for those, which has served me very well in my old job. I'm also starting a new job. And I think it's also, it's kind of interesting because I'm starting on the ground floor of that again. And it's another, a whole nother way to kind of apply those skills and develop them more. And, yeah, I think all of that, I don't want to keep it brief, so I think that kind of, kind of sums it up.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Joe? Councilor Dearing?
Same question. So what would the Planning Commission be losing out on if they didn't reappoint you?
Sure. Yeah, and I think I sort of already, I mean, I think I kind of explained, I think, kind of what I bring to the committee. And I think basically it would be just kind of repeating that. It's like I have that particular approach I use for problem-solving that's kind of unique. Like Rosemary said, I have the initial experience of starting to work on those initial projects and having some experience with them already and some ideas how to carry them forward. So it's really kind of all, all of that same thing again.
Okay.
Councilman Booton?
Comprehensive notes. Good job.
That's it.
Well, I was answering the question for you.
Oh.
Chair Helly and then Councilor Lozon.
That's what I meant, sorry.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. I actually hadn't meant to mention that, but just. Thank you.
Councilor Lozon?
Thank you. Joe, let's talk about your Facebook page. No, I'm only kidding. I wouldn't lower myself. I don't go there. lower myself. I don't go there. I would make the motion to approve Ms. Avril and Mr. Real to three-year terms.
Second.
And third. There's a motion and a second to approve Rosemary Everell and Joe Real to a term. Again, before we've heard from all the applicants, I'll be a note, just because I think we, I think we deserve to give everybody hearing before we start taking votes. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. I just have it.
Thanks for your service. Appreciate it.
All right, that takes us to Chair Helly.
Good evening, councilors, mayor. I've been on the planning commission for, as many of you know, if you can believe it, 10 years. I think it will be in November if you reappoint me. That said, I really appreciate this new appointments process, because I don't think that incumbents should, a rubber stamp should go on. That said, I would like to be reappointed, and I think that there is a good reason. One of the things that is a challenge for the planning commission, which requires specific professional expertise to do a good job, is we need professional support to be able to, you know, to get our work as a committee done. Rosemary mentioned that there's not committee work, and that is true, because mostly, our job as a planning commission is to state goals, what we want to have happen for the city. And there are people who have expertise in the planning discipline, who are going to put those goals into a practical reality. In order to make that happen, one of the priorities of the planning commission was to get some money, to get consultants to be able to do that work. And so the grants that people were talking about recently are really important in moving that forward. It's, it's great that we have that. I'm really looking forward to being able to get the bylaw modernization and updating the North Main Street master plan. Those would be fantastic. Getting our development ordinance updated for the changes that are in S-100 is also a high priority that we need to, you know, we need to get that going. And last, and it's sad for this to be last, I was present when we did our master plan for the city in 2014 and its update. I was chair in 2020 when we did the update. The update is not great. Would be really great to have a municipal master plan that reflects the community goals of the city. Sadly, that's not in our near-term future, simply because of the resources that we have available to us. Man, I mean, there's a lot of great things that we can do. So I'll prefigure your question, Counselor Dearing. Losing me on the planning commission, I do think we are all replaceable. It is true. Since I've been there, when so many of the products of the planning commission were made, it would be a loss to the committee to have that institutional knowledge go away. But that said, if you guys don't reappoint me, it's not like I'm gone from Berry City. Like, I'm committed to the future of our city. And so my feelings aren't hurt, whatever you guys do. But that's my answer to your question preemptively.
Are there any other questions? Yeah, Counselor Dearing.
Have you been able to look at our, the strategic plan for the city that we've been working on?
I don't think that I have seen the current version of it.
Okay.
But my understanding is that it is very much informed by the goals of the municipal plan.
Sure.
So I.
So I would just imagine that they would kind of go hand in hand, and that's why I bring that up, because you're talking.
It is great for that to happen. I agree.
Okay. So you think we could have some cohesion there?
I certainly hope so. Well, I mean, whatever the municipal, the future municipal plan becomes, would, I mean, it would not be able to conflict with the strategic plan.
Right.
That's adopted. So, I mean, they would have to essentially work hand in hand. But they have different focus.
Sure.
Counselor Lozon.
So I'm just bringing this up because you mentioned it. You mentioned S-100, and I believe, believe what you said is, is we need to sort of conform to S-100.
Yeah, right.
Do you think that's a good idea? I mean, S-100, as I see it, S-100 is state statute.
It's true.
Which always trumps local. And my concern is that we go through a lot of work, you know, S-100 is state statute. That's the law. July 1, got to do it. My concern is that a lot of municipalities may change to adopt S-100. Then they repeal or change S-100 into something we don't like. And
I think I would.
We're stuck.
Two responses. One is that I'm going to defer to the professionals who know about this and not say that I think that there's a right thing to do. But I do think that it is confusing if our ordinance disagrees with statute. And so I think there's some ways in which it's probably better for, you know, the developer who's reading the ordinance to be able to trust that ours is, you know, not someplace where they have to go and look up a second set of rules to know what they can actually do. So I share your concern about the fact that things change consistently. It, I don't have a good answer to it, but my hope is that we're going to do whatever is going to work best for the people who need to read the ordinance.
Gotcha. Thanks.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Chair Helly.
Thank you.
All right. So that takes us to Ernie Drown. Hopefully, this isn't too far past a normal rest hour.
Way past my bedtime. Well, the, the quick story is that my family has been in Berry since the 1890s.
She's on mine.
And I was born here and went through school. And now that my wife and I have retired, we were lucky enough to return here. And I have a great love for this city, and I have confidence in the folks who are running the place now, which I didn't always have. And I have time to serve, and I'm reasonably intelligent. And so I put my name out there, but it sounds as though there may be other candidates who have more experience with urban planning and things, which I have none. On the other hand, maybe a fresh eye is what you need. So I'm, I'm willing to serve if you want me to serve.
Thank you for the introduction. Are there any questions? Counselor Dearing.
So what would you bring to the DRB?
Great love of the city, reasonable intelligence.
Planning commission.
DRB, planning commission.
Sorry, it's late.
Yeah.
That's my bedtime, too.
Well, so a good intelligence, a great love of the city, a good knowledge of the 20th century history of Berry. We've been gone for 35 years. And time to serve. That's what I would bring.
Okay. Any other questions?
No question, just a comment. I spy on you pretty much every day as I go to work or as I'm coming back. And I just want to thank you. The house looks great. You know how to foot a ladder. The last guy couldn't get it done. So, so, you know, the house really, it really looks great. I just appreciate it when people take pride in their property.
Yes, I'm wasting the time, but I've always loved that house, and we were thrilled to be able to buy it.
It's looking great.
We were thrilled to have a buyer. Thank you. All right. So that takes us to Kaitlin Corkins.
Should we skip an applicant?
Oh, yeah, I skipped the ones we've heard from. And so I was going to get through the people we haven't heard from yet. So Kaitlin, you're online. Welcome.
I am. Can you all hear me?
Loud and clear.
Great. Thank you so much for the opportunity. I'm Kaitlin Corkins. I've lived in Berry City now for a little over 10 years. I moved to the city right as the big dig was sort of wrapping up. And it was a really exciting time, I think, in the community, just feeling lots of, of energy. Since I moved to Berry, I've been involved in a number of things. I was a board member on the Berry Partnership for a number of years. I am currently on the board of the Berry Historical Society and the People's Health and Wellness Clinic. So I, I really think that public service is important. And so I, when I heard that the planning commission seat was open, I thought this would be a really good fit for my interests and skills. I work for the Vermont Division for Historic Preservation in the Department of Housing and Community Development. I am not a planner, but I do work with a lot of planners at the state level. And high-level work with communities around planning and revitalization. So I'm excited for the opportunity to dig a little bit deeper into the nuts and bolts of what's happening here in Berry. I have been kind of following the minutes of the planning commission and excited to see some of the funding that's coming in and the opportunities that that presents.
Thank you. Any questions for Kaitlin?
Your house looks great, too, Kaitlin.
Thank you.
I spy on Caitlin.
I spy on everybody. I earned it, though. I cleared a driveway for her last week with my, last year.
Thanks very much for that.
All right. So Lisa Leota has withdrawn. Jamie Bauer, you've said your interview stands for both bodies. That leaves us to Raylene.
Why don't we do that again?
It's, it's up to you. Do you have more to say?
No. I think we're good.
Okay. Are there any questions for Raylene on her service to the planning commission? All right. Are there, are there motions?
Move to appoint Michael Helly and Raylene Munié to the, appointing them to two seats, three-year terms.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to appoint Michael and Raylene. Is there discussion? I'll, I'll say that I'm voting against this motion again, because I disagree with Raylene's behavior online. And, and I'd rather see some other individuals fresh, fresh energy. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say nay.
Everybody's got one.
All opposed? Nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it. The motion carries. That leaves us with one additional seat. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to appoint Kaitlin Corkins.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second that, just because I don't, it's, it's nothing personal against Jamie or Ernie. It's, someone has to get it and.
Well, maybe like a, maybe like a foot race or something? Bike race, foot race, something? So part of discussion. I thought, I thought we were going to appoint her as an alternate eventually to, as, to the DRB.
Oh, for?
Jamie.
For Jamie.
Well, if that happens, we, if we create alternate positions, then we need to advertise them and give people equal opportunity to be considered. So it's not an automatic carryover. But, so we have a motion and a second to appoint Kaitlin Corkins to the planning commission. Is there further discussion? All right. Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. We have a full roster for the planning commission. Thank you, everybody. And I'm sorry for those who were not reappointed.
Yeah, it did kind of run over, didn't it?
All right. So that takes us to the Central Vermont Planning Commission. We have one opening for an alternate. Again, Chair Helly.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to appoint Michael Helly to the Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission.
To leave.
Is there any further discussion?
No.
All right. Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The work is done.
Time for executive session.
Some work's done.
With that, yeah. So now we have up, I think we can skip upcoming business. Is, is there any objection to skipping roundtable? All right. Hearing and seeing none, that takes us to an executive session for litigation, real estate, and personnel.
I'm going to ask for a five-minute recess. If that's.
For the first round.
Or two minutes?
Give you two and a half.
Two and a half works, but I need to clear my brain before I flip out.
For litigation and real estate, we just need City Attorney Twombly. And for personnel, we will invite, I'd, I'd ask the council to invite Chief Cushman, Deputy Chief Aldsworth, and the members of the IAFF Executive Board.
All right. While we still have a quorum, how will we make those motions and then take 2.5 recess and then come back and enter executive session?
So moved.
Second.
So we have a motion for findings.
Yeah.
A mover and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Can we have a discussion, just for a second? I just want to make a comment that the real estate issue, I do not think qualifies for it. But that's my opinion.
All right. Let the record show. Counselor Booton objects to real estate and executive session. All right. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. So we have findings, and we're going to have a 2.5-minute recess. And we'll come back and move.
I'm sorry. I did not hear who moved and seconded to go into executive session.
We haven't done that yet.
Right. We had the motion for findings. Just somebody move and second.
Oh, you want to move.
To go in, or did you want to do the break and then?
Either way, that's fine. We can do that. Now, let's do the motion, second. Executive session with the people that Manager Solly Castro said in 9:45.
Okay, thank you.
Discussion, same comment. Nay.
Many apologies to the staff.
Carol, you recorded my nay for both.
Oh, that's bullshit.
All you did was say you objected, that.
No, I said nay both times. Sorry. It was very. Anyone else want?
Because you said you objected to the real estate, which is.
I did.
Why I didn't take that. First of all, I didn't hear you say nay. And I took it as being just one thing that you were.
Yeah, it was because it was very quickly gone through. That's the reason why. I said nay, though. I definitely said nay.
Which time? There's been so many.
Oliver, how you doing, buddy?
How are you?
Not good.
Yeah.
Not, not really. But that's okay.
Maybe it's just the long meeting and a hot roll.
Booty.
You know, it's been a long year and a half.
My second was contingent upon Carol staying for executive session. Without that, we do not have an executive session.
Very long year.
Keep your little tush right there, Madam Secretary.
If I had a little tush, I'd keep it here. But since I don't.
Well, then keep whatever says tushy.
Are you running away from us, Carol?
I am.
No, she doesn't. It was part of my motion.
I am. I spent the morning having major dental surgery, and I'm going home.
Oh, are you?
Yes.
Mine's a little tush. Is that what's kept your lips?
I did.
Oh, I saw, I saw it.
Yeah.
You want to talk spying on? I watch everything you do.
Well.
Thank you.
All right, I will make the motion at 11:06 PM to come out of executive session.
Second?
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion to adjourn. Those guys have it as their motion to adjourn. Motion by Council Booton.
Second.
Looking back Council Wazzaq. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We adjourned at 11:10.
Good night all.
Night.
Night Becky.